I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. My apologies. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here, for bringing everyone here safely. Help us to come together as a community to consider the things that we are having laid before us. Let us be of an open mind. Let us be free to speak. Let us be civilized, be abiding by your will, and let our hearts be that we would be within your perfect will in our lives. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start off with items of community interest. So we want to thank volunteers who worked on Forepost Lane and Green Meadow Lane on February 22nd. They are Herbert Fletcher, Mike Griffin, Cliff Mangrum, Ken Phillips, Josh Sinkovich, Kevin Sinkovich, Mike Tillenhouse, Darryl Watson, and Simeon White. Mike Jaffe loaned his trailer out as well. Thank you very much. Thanks to the volunteers who worked on the February 22nd mailout, Jonathan Blake, Ray Hereagoin, Simeon White, Secretary Ann Hamilton, and Deputy Secretary Teresa Shalender were paid. Thanks to the volunteers who completed the culvert repair on March 1st, they are Mark Broschis, Terry Fowler, Mike Jaffe, Chad DeLita for the rock donation. Thank you, guys. On March 13th, there's a little typo there, but March 13th, thanks to the volunteers who worked on CR 249 for the safety repairs. They are Leland Barnett, Yasmin Barnett, his two employees of LBJ Diversified, Herbert Fletcher, Ken Phillips, Kevin Sinkovich, Brian Vincent, and then Terry Fowler came later, but he wasn't in my picture, but I wanted to add him. So thank you, guys. You are amazing folks in our town, and we're just so grateful. You really make our community better. Thank you so much. Tonight, the TCU, some of you were asking me this, the TCU hearing regarding the potential rock crushing plant on Highway 276 was unfortunately chosen the same night as tonight in Quinlan at the Ford High School, and we hope citizens were able to show up for that important meeting. The conflict was unavoidable, owing to legal restraints. It just happened, and there was really nothing we can do about that. So I know there's a lot of people very interested in that one as well. So going on to G, our reports, financial reports. So the first report is the February end of 2024. It says 2023, but that is 2024. So the, on the report, we have a beginning bank balance of $89,803.05. The ending balance is $88,418.80. We had the Texas Comptroller Sales and Use Tax came in, $11,177.13, and then we had an application for release. There was another $125. We have several withdrawals and debits and several checks paid. The withdrawals and debits were $3,595.53. The checks paid amounted to $9,090.85. So we still have some 11 FEC checks outstanding. We did have one actually submit that request. We, I think we have another year, but if you know of anybody who did not receive that, we still have those outstanding. Moving on to the B, the Sales and Use Tax Receipt Report. All this, 100% of this goes to road refurbishment. We are saving that. Again, that just started last April with the Sales and Use Tax revenue just began, the 1.5%. So 100% of that is, goes to road refurbishment. So you'll see on that report, it started out $392.28 in May, then it's gotten progressively more. For March, it ended up being $8,313.79. A lot of that is Amazon, eBay, anything you buy from home, we get that 1.5% and that 100% that goes to roads. The total allocation currently is $88,386.01. Again, that is in covered fund, that 100% of that must go, by state law, must go to our road fund. All right. Under C, Report C, Solid Waste Transition, because we did switch over in January, and that was kind of a big change for our town. I had to call this today. As of today, we have 540 households who are using black sack disposal in town. This is approximately 115 over, our highest participation when we had the free market system in place. Dick Demine, the co-owner, has been very communicative. He's been very agreeable. He's, he's made sure if we have extra roadside trash, someone just dumps some things, he's been very, very easy to work with. He picked up a mattress, spare mattress this month. I've only had personally one complaint, but it was outside of town actually, on a private road. The drive, apparently they were going over the 15 mile speed limit, but the driver's now aware that it's 15 miles, not the normal, which is 35 on our little county roads. So overall, it appears to be going better than expected. So, okay, so our item two, our legal report. Attorney David Verman is going to give a report on annexations. There seems to be a lot of confusion around annexations for a type A general law town, and he's going to clarify some of that.
So I'm going to try to address not just the council, but everybody else that's out here. Town of Poetry has received what I perceive to be an extremely large number of ETJ release petitions. With the last legislative session, Senate adopted Senate Bill 2038 that gives property owners a right to have their properties excluded or removed from a town's or a city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The legislation is currently subject to review. City of Grand Prairie and a few other cities have filed a lawsuit in Travis County seeking to declare the statute unconstitutional. As it exists, though, it is on the books and it is a law today. It gives property owners an absolute right to compel the release of their property from a town's extraterritorial jurisdiction by filing a proper petition. A number of cities disagree with the statute. For example, last November, the city of Denton just on its own denied six separate petitions because they disagree with the statute and don't think it's a good one. I don't believe that it was well-written. The authors of the bill have given statements to people that are a bit confusing and show that they don't really understand it. But so that people here are aware, in my opinion, and all the cities that I'm familiar with and all the cities that I've seen since the legislation was adopted, I think per capita, Poetry probably has the highest number of ETJ release petitions in any city in the state of Texas. It suggests to me that there is maybe a misunderstanding or a misconception about what effect of a petition, a release petition does. All cities have, an ETJ, or most cities have an extraterritorial jurisdiction, an aura that surrounds the city, from Poetry to half a mile from our town limits. Within that extraterritorial jurisdiction, the Town of Poetry has the rights to impose subdivision regulations and then a handful of other few minor things, for example, sign regulations and cemetery requirements, for example. But the big deal is subdivision regulations. In addition, property within a city's ETJ is subject to being annexed by that city. And I think that's the biggest concern that most people have, is the fear of annexation. For subdivision regulations, the Town of Poetry doesn't have any subdivision regulations. We have adopted none whatsoever, but we have an interlocal agreement with Kaufman County and with Hunt County where each of those counties will impose, will enforce and impose their, their subdivision regulations within ETJ territories. If your property is within our ETJ, then Poetry's ETJ, and it is not released, then you are bound by Kaufman County's or Hunt County's subdivision regulations. If your property is released from our ETJ, then your property is bound by Hunt County's or Kaufman County's subdivision regulations because you're not in our ETJ at all, and you're strictly subject to their codes and their regulations. As far as annexation is concerned, I understand that, and I believe that there has been information, maybe misinformation going around town that says that if you are within the town's ETJ, that one of these days the Town of Poetry is going to annex your property without your consent. Town of Poetry is a type A general law municipality. The Town of Poetry will be a type A general law municipality until maybe such time as the population is over 5,000, and we adopt a home rule charter. I don't see that happening anytime in the near future. Historically, no city in Texas, no general law city, has ever had the ability to forcibly annex somebody else's property with two exceptions. Let me make this clear. Type A general law municipalities in Texas do not and have never had the authority to forcibly, non-consensually annex somebody else's territory, whether it's in their ETJ or not. The one exception, the first exception historically has been if that town provided water service to that property, then the town could annex the territory, and the property owner had the rights to compel dis-annexation the following year. The other exception is by a local election in an area that consists of multiple property owners. If you had several property owners and you petitioned to be annexed and you were not a successful voter, if majority of the property owners voted in favor of the annexation, an annexation by election, and you were not one of the proponents of that, then your property would be part of that election and you could be annexed. Those laws don't exist anymore. Home rule cities no longer have the authority to annex territory. The Town of Poetry and type A general law municipalities have no authority to annex land anymore, whether it's in our ETJ or not, unless it's with the consent of the property owner, or unless we own the territory. If we owned your land, we could annex it. If we don't own your land, and we don't, we cannot annex your territory unless you give us consent. And even then, consent is through an agreement with certain disclaimers and certain requirements. Everybody, we understand that. And I want to make this clear. The Town of Poetry does not and has never had the authority to annex anyone's territory without their consent. We have never had that law. We've never had that right. We don't have it today, and we don't have it at any point in the foreseeable future. It is possible that the Texas Legislature may one day change the laws, but over the past 10 to 15 years, the trend of legislation has been to limit and restrict cities' abilities to annex territory. It's one of the things that the legislature has never liked for cities to do. In some states, there is no such thing. There's no annexation authority at all, for example, in New York State. Historically, over the years, the legislature has made the annexation statutes more and more complex, more and more difficult to follow. It used to be where you'd annex, the goal for all type A general law municipalities was to hit the population of 5,000, and once they did, they just started annexing territory everywhere. Is that a question?
No, I do have a question.
Sure.
Why are we so afraid of Terrell coming to annexing us?
Terrell's a home rule city. Before the legislation has been adopted, legislation has changed over time, and, and several years ago, cities, home rule cities had that authority. Type A general law cities like Poetry has never had the authority. But even today, Terrell no longer has that ability. Last legislative session, the authority to annex, the authority to conduct non-consensual annexations no longer exists.
So Terrell can now come in?
Nope. Unless, unless, unless you agree, if you're a property owner, or unless Terrell owns your land. Was there another question? Yes, ma'am.
So Mr. Verman, I'm here to present to the city council, everybody, is that what you're doing?
I'm providing the city council with the report.
Oh, you're speaking to the general audience.
Any, any other questions? I don't want to argue, I mean, that's not what I'm here for.
So Attorney Verman, Terrell had the two resolutions passed before the law changed, and that's how they were forcibly annexing, before the SB 2038. So, so can you clarify that for?
Yeah. Home rule cities have had the authority to annex territory within their ETJ for years and years. The legislature, like I said, the trend of legislation has been to restrict and limit and make it more difficult up until the last legislative session where there is no authority anymore at all. So I think we were incorporated before that law was passed anyway, so. Other questions? Way in the back.
What other regulation and ordinance can the ETJ be affected by the city's rule? If it's, if it's annex, if it's non-annexable, what else can the city impose, regulation ordinance apply on the ETJ?
Number one, subdivision regulations.
What else?
Number two, the ability to regulate cemeteries. Number three, sign codes, sign regulations. And for a type A general law municipality, that's just about it. That's just about it.
What about nuisance regulation?
Home rule cities can regulate nuisances in their ETJ. Type A general law municipalities probably not, probably not even that. Probably not even that. We have very limited regulatory authority in our ETJs. The concept of ETJs historically has really been, this is an area that's kind of reserved. If we were a home rule city, or if the property owners consented to it, we could annex that territory and expand it within our ETJ. Having the ability to regulate subdivision development gave us an ability historically to be able to make sure that the developments that were in our ETJ were appropriate, were safe, were constructed, utilities and streets were constructed according to city standards. But now that we can't annex at all, except by consent, you know, we still have subdivision regulatory authority, but for all practical intents and purposes, in the Town of Poetry, it really doesn't make a difference. We don't have any subdivision regulations. We adopt through an interlocal agreement with the counties, the authority to, we give them the authority to regulate using their regulations and their enforcement mechanisms. If you were in our ETJ or outside of our ETJ, the same rules would apply regardless. Yes, ma'am?
What's the purpose of the ETJ?
Well, we have the ability to regulate subdivisions. Not all, not all cities have a lack of subdivision regulatory authority. Lots of cities out there have subdivision regs that they want to apply. A lot of cities like to be able to prohibit billboards and offensive signs in their ETJ, but it's no longer, you know, the reserved land for possible or future expansion, that reservation of land concept doesn't exist anymore. But subdivision regulations and sign codes do, yes.
Are the, the subdivision, Grand Prairie, have deed restrictions?
Sure.
Like in the capitol. Does the city have the right to regulate those?
We do not. Deed restrictions exist by private agreement among property owners and sellers. Those are completely and entirely personal and private to individual owners. Cities do not have the authority to step in and enforce them, or to, well, to some extent, you can require them sometimes, but we can't enforce those. Those are by contract and not by...
Plan development.
Plan development is different. That is an ordinance. That is a zoning ordinance that imposes zoning requirements on a specific tract of property, completely separate and independent. They may match, they may have similar requirements, but they are completely fundamentally different. Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and being within the ETJ or in the Town of Poetry, does it protect us from having a county road expanded or changed anyway? So if I live in County Road, within Poetry, but not the ETJ line, and yet, for instance, Terrell has a planned expansion of their road coming straight in front of my house, am I protected being in Poetry or being right there in the ETJ?
If you're in our city limits, the Town of Poetry has exclusive authority to regulate streets. Terrell can build a street, would love for them to do that because we'd rather have them pay for it. But we can, highways are different. If you're talking about state highways or federal, that's different. But no, they, they can't and are not supposed to be building within our town limits. As far as our ETJ is concerned, I can't imagine that, that Terrell would want to build a street in another city's ETJ. It's just spending money on their part.
The full website, so if you go to the Terrell website, you can see a much expanded road right there on County Route 52, it's like two or four lanes.
They're optimistic.
And that's a part of my house.
They're optimistic, yeah.
I think that's a whole, that's a whole plan.
But I feel, but I feel safe knowing that I'm in, within that ETJ.
Right. Gentlemen, next, you had a question, I think.
Ellen.
Oh, okay.
He was trying to get your name today.
Oh, okay, yeah. I wouldn't, I don't want to see your hand, yeah.
I have a question.
Hang on, hang on. Yes, sir.
Being, I'm sorry, I think we had a mix-up there. So Tim, why don't you go first, and then we'll let Glenn Strauss go next, please.
Being a type A, using their township as we are, my understanding is that four mile radius on the ETJ. With the influx, is that not correct?
No, sir. It's not, it doesn't have to do with the nature of the, the type of city, it has to do with its population. Based on our population, our ETJ is a half a mile around our city limits.
But I knew we had had a border area of around citizens inside of that border to be a type A, okay? But with this influx, you're saying, of all people that are trying to withdraw, you're going to lose that area, and you're actually going to, you can't, you can't lease property because of these properties that are already being out.
I understand.
So is that not going to affect?
Release, a release from our ETJ is not the same thing as a release from our city limits. Our town limits are locked in, and we're not talking about dis-annexing territory that is already within our town limits, we're just talking about this additional extraterritorial jurisdiction. Yeah, I understand the difference. Now, if we were to dis-annex territory so that our, our land area no longer complied with the requirements that were necessary when we first incorporated, it wouldn't matter either, because once you incorporate, you're locked in. If you shrink and get too small, that's okay, but you're still a type A general law municipality. Yeah, that was a quick question up here. I'll let you, Mr. Schmitt, I'll get you in just a second. All right, go ahead.
Okay. Matt, you said earlier that the citizens don't have to fear some, any kind of forced annexation by the Town of Poetry because they don't have that authority?
No type A general law municipality has ever had the authority to involuntarily or non-consensually annex a person's property.
Okay, are you aware?
Except if they provided water service.
Are you aware that for the original incorporation in 2020, 411 residents of Hunt County were incorporated forcibly, non-consensually, with no vote?
Are we talking about annexing territory or incorporating?
They were incorporated.
See, my, my report is focused on annexations. I don't want to argue about what happened two years ago when we first incorporated, because I know that there's still an issue out there that, that I don't want to get involved in. Not tonight.
Okay, so, point of order, that's not on the topic. The topic is annexations. Incorporation is a completely different topic.
Just not appropriate, I'm going to answer it. Hold on, hold on. Yes, sir.
I want to circle back to what you said a moment ago. You did say that the citizens have the right to remove themselves from the ETJ?
Yes.
Could you comment on how the Town of Poetry justifies charging people to exercise their right?
Who's going to pay, who's going to pay for that? A petition has to be reviewed and evaluated, and number one, hold on, let me answer your question. You understand that these are governmental functions here, and someone has, the money has to come from somewhere, and we don't impose taxes. So a petition comes in, let's assume hypothetically that the review of the petition is really simple and straightforward. The biggest cost and expense that we're experiencing is the surveys, or having an engineer verify that the legal description is correct. State law requires that, that a petition for removal from an ETJ must be accompanied by a lot block, an addition description if it's a subdivision, or by a meets and bounds description. And the statute is really clear, it uses those words, it must have a map and a meets and bounds description. Now, if you've ever seen a meets and bounds description...
Please don't interrupt, thank you.
It can be written in, in Greek, and I wouldn't be able to figure it out. The only way that you can tell whether or not the meets and bounds description is accurate is by having a surveyor take a look at it, and they don't work for free. So someone has to, someone has to pay for it, and if we're taking money from a road fund to pay to review, to pay a survey to review these petitions, that seems a bit unfair. The fees that are charged by the town, as I understand it, actually, I'm pretty clear on this, they are based on not making a profit, but a break-even analysis. We, we've had a whole bunch of petitions. It takes a lot of time and effort, and it costs money to have them reviewed and evaluated. So the worst thing that could happen would be somebody would submit a petition for removal, and their legal description, which is not really understandable by ordinary people, but includes territory that is within the town's limits, or, or includes their neighbor's territory. The only way that we can verify that is by having a surveyor check that and confirm for us, and they don't work for free. We've got to pay for it. So, so it is a governmental function that we are entitled to ask for compensation for. We're not making a profit off of it, it's a break-even analysis. State law says we couldn't make a profit even for... Does that make sense? It may not be the answer that you want, but...
Well, if I may just comment on that, everything you said makes sense, and I appreciate the information. However, the same thing could be said for having an election. There's costs.
Sure there is.
Someone has to pay for it.
Sure there is.
You don't charge people to vote.
We can't.
This is their right.
That's exactly right.
It's also their right to request an ETJ, and I will stop.
I understand, I, I get your concept. There was a question over here. Yes, ma'am?
We're Grand Prairie.
Okay.
And the vision, that's in the USPD, quite enough.
I understand.
They have everything run at all requirement.
Right.
Terrell had said that they were doing costs.
Hey, I think we're off topic.
Yeah, maybe that may be off topic, but I will say this. We don't have any, a PD, a planned development, is a zoning ordinance. We don't have any zoning ordinances right now, but we'll be talking about that later on this evening. There's a question way back, yes, sir. Way back in the back.
If you had your property planned and surveyed the next number of years, can that not still be used, or is that something, is there a time limit?
You mean for an ETJ release petition? You mean for an ETJ release petition?
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if the meets and bounds description is that specific territory to be released from the ETJ, yeah, that would work. All right, yes, ma'am, you got a question right here.
That people that are property owners getting released with requests from the ETJ, does that protect them from future property taxes for that area?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a difference. Let's assume hypothetically that tomorrow or next month, the council adopted an out-of-the-law tax rate. Properties within a town's ETJ is not taxable for out-of-the-law purposes. We can't impose out-of-the-law taxes in our ETJ. So whether you are in our ETJ or outside of it, you ain't going to be taxed, even if, even hypothetically, which is quite a stretch, we had a, a tax rate in effect. Does that make sense? Okay, way back in the back.
Okay, so I'm in the ETJ, and let's suppose that I pull 90 acres out of the ETJ tomorrow before the council, they approve it, right? No longer ETJ, the first property outside, so you're city limits now, less than half a mile from city hall. Can I put development in there?
If you are, if you are not, if you are not within the town's ETJ, or if you are in the town's ETJ, the town zoning regulations, if we adopted any at all, would not apply to ETJ territory. A lot of people have a misunderstanding in that regard. Zoning regulations do not apply in a city's ETJ. Only subdivision regulations do. Now, for your territory, for your land, your 90 acres, if you are within our ETJ, by virtue of the interlocal agreement that we have with, I assume it's Kaufman County, is that right? By virtue of the interlocal agreement that we have with, with Kaufman County, Kaufman County has the authority, because we say so, to impose their subdivision regulations. If you are outside of our ETJ, then the interlocal agreement would not apply, and Kaufman County would apply their subdivision regulations. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So whether you're in or outside of our ETJ, I, the only difference is really going to be that if you wanted to post a billboard on your sign and your neighbors didn't like it, there would be nothing that we could do about it if you were outside of our ETJ. Similarly, if your neighbors wanted to do that, we're stuck.
And so I can go down my county road to Cleveland Road, which is not inside Poetry city limits, and I'm not touching your road, right? So you take control of the road to the 90 acres that I have sold to be our property, correct?
Exactly.
I just, just wanted to say.
Yeah, no, exactly. Okay, so, so with that in mind, with that in mind, I think I'm going to be here for a little while, and...
We need to move on.
Yeah, we need to move on. So, thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Secretary's report, Ann Hamilton.
Did I turn this off last time? I think I did. Okay, this is on, right? Okay. All right, Secretary's report. I would like to thank everyone for welcoming, this is from me first. I would like to thank everyone for welcoming me to your town, and I look forward to getting to know each of you. I hope you will all be patient as I familiarize myself with the town's operations. So far this month, I've been working on catching up with the minutes of the previous meetings so that we can get them posted to the website and keep everybody informed. And going forward, I will be learning how to take care of the town website myself, and I will also be engrossed in classes required by the Attorney General of Texas that I need to take in order to do this position. So I'm glad, I'm excited to embark on this journey, and I know together we will achieve great things. From Teresa, she writes, "By now you should have received the March newsletter. Please note the hard work the town has been putting forth to work on our roads. You may drive by and see these citizens working hard to repair the roads within our town. A big thank you to all who have donated their time on these projects. Spring cleaning day is fast approaching. Mark your calendars and lend a hand Friday and Saturday, April 18th and 19th. Check your newsletter for details. Once again, our spring weather is around the corner. Let's do what we can to keep Poetry beautiful and enjoy the upcoming changes in the weather." From Teresa.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Okay, at this time, we're going to open the public hearing revolving around a comprehensive zoning ordinance and comprehensive zoning... revolving around a comprehensive zoning ordinance and comprehensive zoning map. So I'm going to go ahead and go through the guidelines here. Welcome to our public hearing regarding our Town of Poetry Comprehensive Zoning and Comprehensive Zoning Map. Over twenty months, a research committee of Councilmember Fowler, Councilmember White, and seven citizens worked and developed a comprehensive plan, which is a three-page document stating that we basically would like to stay rural as a community. In the fall of 2023, we had three meetings which allowed citizens to provide input for the proposed zoning ordinance, which came out of all of that. In December, January, and February, we discussed the zoning map and the town meetings also allowing citizen input. After months of discussion, Councilmember White, Councilmember Blake, myself, with our town attorney, were charged with fine tuning the final document. Dozens of hours later, we have this document before you. While it may be imperfect, we've given it our best. To give you a reference, this document is only seventeen pages. The city of Terrell's document is three hundred and seven pages. Our attorney has said that this is the shortest zoning document he has seen to date. Our goal was and is to keep our rural atmosphere and to have as few rules as possible while trying to prevent undesirable businesses in development, while being good to our legacy families and our current business holders. Myself, I have forty-two acres in town, so anything we pass, I too will be subject to in my businesses as well. The notifications were made in the Terrell Tribune and by mailouts based on tax appraisal records as required by state law. This public hearing will work this way. Councilmember White will give an overview first. He will explain the map first, then he will give an overview of the ordinance. We will go as council, page by page, to discuss. There are some copies if you do not have one, or you can follow online. Once we've gone through, we will invite citizens who have already signed up to speak. You have, may have up to three minutes of uninterrupted time to voice your concern or your, or your support. You may not share with other speakers and may only speak once during the public hearing. You must stay on topic. The topic is either the map and/or the ordinance. The topic is not the process of how we got here or anything, mailouts or any such things. If you're off topic, you will be redirected. If given a warning and you continue, you will be asked to sit down for a fitting the remainder of your time. There will be no heckling or clapping or any other disturbance. We will stop the meeting if there's such and such until there is order in the chamber. Any continued disturbance will be handled by our peace officer. There will be no answering of questions, but if you have a question at the podium, Secretary Anne will type them down for us. Additionally, you may write down a question to give to her at, at the break. After the break, as a council, we will try to address those questions as time permits. Okay, so Councilmember.
I'll take it away. Can everybody hear me, first of all, way in the back?
Be good.
Awesome. Cause I'm going to be talking for just a little while because there's a lot to go over. Took us two and a half years to figure out what was going on with planning and zoning. And we want to shorten that for y'all. So I'm just going to be walking through and kind of explaining where it came from and where we're going with it. Like I said, I'm going to take my time. I think it's going to save everyone time in the end because I was answering questions all day today and most of them are just repeat and people just need some more information. And although we are a lot shorter than Terrell's, it's still a seventeen-page document. I'm sure most of us haven't read it and then those that have probably don't understand at all, at least the first pass through. So I'm just going to go through, kind of hit the highlights and let y'all know what we were thinking. Because I don't know if y'all are like me, but whenever I hear zoning, I get concerned because I think big city and developments and, you know, concrete, pretty much. And that's not what we, what we want here for poetry. So I appreciate everybody showing up. I think it's a very responsible thing to do because this does affect everyone. And this isn't your typical P and Z ordinance either. I know Mr. Berman said it was the shortest one he's ever seen, but probably unique in some other areas as well, I'd imagine. And we're going to go over some of that. I'll tell you a little bit about myself though first, which is this is my second year on the council. And the reason I ran is that I had a business in Terrell that got kicked out because Terrell's P and Z is so restrictive that it shut down our little business that was going on there and we got pushed right out of town. Had to close up shop and move out in thirty days. It was pretty rough. So I ran for two reasons. One is to keep Poetry, the beautiful and not overly developed community that we have today, keep those fields, keep those green spaces. You know, that's why I love it out here so much as opposed to the concrete jungle of Terrell. And also to make sure we don't have restrictive zoning. So I'm here to make sure both those things happen and that's why I've been working with this document for two and a half years now. And it's gone through a lot of different hands. We have a lot of people to thank for working with us on this because at first it was myself and Councilman Fowler and seven other neighbors that were helping out. We met every Wednesday for almost two years trying to make this happen. It was a long, long time, but we wanted to make sure we did a good job. And then after that, we brought it up to council and they reviewed it a few times. We brought it back to that group before we got the bones of the document. That first group kind of established the basic guidelines and also established what they call the comprehensive plan, which is a document that's already passed that kind of gives the vision for the town. And we'll read a little bit from that in a second. After that, it went to legal, which they changed it up a little bit, fixed a lot of issues that we had in it as inexperienced citizens here. And at that point, I changed its name to the zero zoning ordinance because that's kind of the vision was to have it be no effect on us as property holders, but to have an effect on future big development or big business that might try to come in. Now, we ended up changing the name because it's a little bit misleading. We want to be clear about what we're doing, but I hope that everybody's kind of kept with the heart of that zero zoning idea. The council reviewed it and then just recently, and we had good input from all the councilmen, both in and out of council. And then recently, myself and Mr. Blake and some other citizens went through and edited again over the last six months, just to be extra, extra sure that we were doing this right. And in total, from the people I counted and the advice I got from just people in Poetry, we had over thirty-five different people contribute and help with this. So thank you to everybody that's been doing this for two and a half years. It really has been a community effort. I'm not smart enough to do it alone and I don't think anyone else was either, so. It took a village. Now, while we did that, of course, we tried to keep it posted on the forum to keep everyone up to date as we were making edits. And I say all that just so y'all know, this wasn't rushed. This wasn't cobbled together over, overnight. This took years to do and to be quite honest, a lot of development has happened in those couple of years, as y'all know. So I'm sorry we couldn't do it sooner. There's a lot that came in and developed our town and made it, made it a little more urbanized than maybe we would like it, but I'm hoping we could at least address it going forward. And kind of what we envision for this ordinance, we put in the comprehensive plan, which I'm just going to read the first little mission statement because I don't want to take too much time here. And the mission statement for that comprehensive plan is to protect our rural and agricultural lifestyle from encroachment of persons, developers, and special districts who do not hold the rural spirit as a priority through the following means. One, to keep development consistent with rural lifestyle. Two, regulating and/or preventing heavy industry traffic and high-density development while securing the rights of light manufacturing, small business, and property owners. And three is to hold dear the liberties of our citizens while being considerate of our neighbors by having as few rules as possible. And four, those rules to be in keeping with rural lifestyle. And that's the bit that had to do with zoning there. And if you want to know our vision anymore, what we'd like to see the town, I would just look around. What our town is today is how we want to keep it. We can't go back in time, but at least we can slow down the progress in development that's kind of eating away at who we are as a town. Developments are coming in. I mean, you've probably seen the businesses on two seventy-six. You know, there's a tow trucks shop and there's, you know, a used tire shop. There's a tattoo parlor and that's right over there. Now those businesses have turned onto fifteen sixty-five, or at least the industry has, as they put up that big electrical substation. And I don't think anyone's kidding themselves. We know it's headed our way. And so are the developments. I mean, some developments are already here. We have, you know, D.R. Horton on, you know, League Line or Old Poetry or whatever you call that road. We've got the Bishop Airfield Development and quite a few others that have cropped up just in the last years. And now that they're in, they're in, there's nothing we can do about it. But the best we can do is try to preserve what we have left. And we just don't want more power grids in the town. We don't want to see gas stations popping up everywhere. Hopefully, we don't want to see a McDonald's. Maybe there's some diverse opinion about that one, but I don't anyways. I want to keep it the way it is. We don't want this town to become completely urban. There are plenty of other places to go that you can bask in the concrete jungles, but here for our town, we like the open fields. We like the large lots. That's really what we're trying to preserve here. And we're not going to stop developments. I'm not going to kid y'all. Businesses are gonna head our way, more and more. They're going to surround the town. Developments are going to try to find every loophole they can, but we can't slow them down. And we can do our best to preserve what we have. Because personally, I have quite a bit at stake here because I own land and I have family members and friends here and I'm not leaving. So I've got a lifetime of living here at stake and I'd like to preserve this place for as long as possible. And I know many of y'all, for the rest of y'all's life and the lives of y'all's children or grandchildren here, we want to just try and keep this place together for as long as we can. We might not win, but we can give it our best shot. Now, we're going to talk about the map real quick because that's kind of a good point. And it has some confusion in it, so we're going to go over it a little bit. And it kind of gives the basic idea on the grounds for the zoning. Because you see there are three colors here and each of those represent a different kind of property. The yellow, which is the fewest, are the businesses here in Poetry. Now, they can stay. They can do as they've always done. That's fine. But now with this zoning map, the businesses couldn't keep growing and growing and growing and expanding.
And nonprofits.
And nonprofits.
And nonprofits, churches.
I should specify that because the church is on here and so it's like the cemetery. Those can't keep expanding. There can't be warehouses popping up in every district. That's one of the benefits of putting them kind of in a little box here, right? So it prevents a power station from popping up next to you, right? Or a gas station from being on your street corner. We have our biggest zone, which is the green, which is all tracks above five acres. Now, we've got a lot of big tracks here in Poetry. You know, there's a lot of open fields. And we want to keep those as bigger lots so we can continue to be a country community and not an urban one. And that's for five plus acres. Now for our pink, which we call the single-family estate, that's anywhere from two and a half to five acres. So they're still pretty big, but they're not as big as the green. And we'll get into why breaking this up makes sense in a second. And then the very smallest is the purple. And there, and we're going to get to questions in just a minute. I'm just going to try to get through this pretty quick. And the purple's the very smallest. It's anywhere that's below the two and a half acres. And there really aren't that many out here. I mean, most of this is very country. You know, there's a few strips here and there. The reason this is broken up and the main reason this is beneficial for everyone is that when a big developer wants to come in, we legally can't deny them developing. But we can say, you're in green, you're in five acres zoning district. You need to stay within those limits or seek for your property to undergo a zoning change. It puts in another hurdle and another difficulty for developers. That's the main reason to break it up into multiple districts so that these beautiful, nice, big fields don't turn into a ton of mini houses or RV parks or whatever else. Now, one of the most notable things, Mr. Berman touched on it, is you'll notice that there's a black line running through our maps. They should be back there too. That black line is the town limits. Only things within those black lines, within this little strip, fall under zoning. So unfortunately, if a big business wants to build outside the town, whether it's in the gray or outside of the black lines, we're not going to be able to help that. They're going to be able to build and construct and make, you know, terrible concrete monoliths if they want. We can't really stop that. You'll notice that on our zoning map, it extends out of it and there's a reason for that. It's because we're judging properties by what we call the mother tract, which is a combination of all tracks that are managed by the same person and operated the same way, kind of all combined into one. And so y'all know that Kaufman County broke up our properties in CAD. They had the stuff that was in the town and outside of the town as separate tax IDs, right? Well, we thought it would be really unfair for people that have nice, big lots to be zoned as a tiny little class just because Kaufman broke it up into two tracks, right? Even though it's run and operated the same way it always has been. So this is kind of the big tract that is owned all by one person and is going to be viewed in zoning as if it was all within the town as far as how we treat it and, and would regulate it. Because we want people to have as much freedom as possible and those bigger lots have that. So just to give them some more ability there and to make it fair for our bigger property owners. That's also very consistent with the way we do other residents. Like for the trash service, it's going to be the point of entry, like the driveway, for what determines that. And that's generally along the same. So if you're green in this map, you're probably under the trash as well. And although we don't regulate voting, let me say that, we have nothing to do with voting. That is county. The county looks at this in the same way that we're looking at it, which is mother track. You get to decide if you're in the town or not, as long as the property you're on is touching the town border, right? So this is consistent with all our other kind of viewing of who's in the, in the town and outside of the town. So it's just very consistent and to make sure that big property owners are taken care of. And we'll get back to any map questions in a second too. We're just going to finish up here because there are some overviews that we need to hit and some Q and As that are probably going to answer a lot of your questions anyways. So kind of at the heart of this document, kind of the most important central aspect, in my own opinion, is limiting development, which is no more than one primary house used for residing in by a, by a family per two and a half acres. One primary family per two and a half acres. That way developers can't come in and do a bunch of families, you know, they find a lot that's ninety acres and put in ninety houses. Or, you know, maybe they have a, what do you call that? A wastewater packaging plant, I always want to say, but it's actually a.
Mud.
Mud, thank you. They put in a mud and now they've got a quarter acre lot or an eighth acre lot. We really want to avoid that if possible. So kind of the core of it is two and a half acres per household. But for outbuildings like barns and sheds and greenhouses and all that, the kind of stuff I love to just throw up all over my property, completely fine. Everybody can put up as many as they want. You could have, you're going all the way back to your property. You could have the barn the size of Texas. That's completely fine. We don't care about that. It's allowed in all places. Doesn't really have any regulations. Don't worry. Accessory buildings, completely fine. This is just to make sure that we don't have a thousand households all coming in Poetry and chopping it up into tiny little sections. Cottage businesses are another big thing. Cottage businesses are another big thing. A lot of us are entrepreneurs, have side hustles, you know, selling eggs, selling cookies, you know, selling soaps, in my case. Completely fine, cottage businesses, always allowed. You don't have to be in B1 to have a little cottage business where you're selling stuff on Etsy or something. Now, you can't say you have a cottage business if you have, you know, a 20,000 square foot warehouse in the back and LTL trucks coming in and out all the time, you're like, "I'm a cottage business." You know, I don't care if it's, you know, McDonald's Incorporated, no, this is a cottage, no, no. But for smaller businesses, absolutely fine, absolutely allowed. For those bigger businesses, thankfully, we can keep them within the bounds of that business district, that yellow. There might be a few businesses popping up in those sections, we can't really do anything about it. But cottage businesses, your little mom, pop, completely fine. We're gonna talk about grandfathering and nonconforming real quick, too. And this is a really important topic, because some of the things, really very few of the things we're doing, wouldn't be allowed in the zoning ordinance. And in fact, I'm having trouble thinking of one. But for example, we're gonna have setbacks be 75 feet from the center of the road, so that houses can't be right up against the road. Because y'all have probably been to Caddo Mills where all the houses are right there. It almost feels claustrophobic, it's pretty bad. 75 feet is a lot closer than you might think, also. It's not very restrictive at all. It still feels really close, I hope people build it further back, but we just really wanted to make sure we weren't restrictive. From us looking at it, and from me looking at the map later, I could only find two houses that were closer than 75 feet. Like, to give you an idea of how close that sort of stuff is, Caddy Corner from Tackinag, there's those trailers that came in, those are, even though they feel pretty close, they're 115 feet back. They're way farther than they have to be. So somebody would have to be significantly closer to that to not fall in the zoning ordinance, because we're trying to make it really light, we're trying to not make it restrictive, but also not make ourselves miserable in the future when people build right up against the road. So if you were one of those two people, you would be nonconforming, because you wouldn't conform with the P and Z document. But that's okay, because you would be what they call grandfathered in, which pretty much means that you can continue to do exactly as you have been doing forever. And if you sell it to someone else, the next person can continue to use it for that use forever. It's, there's nothing wrong with it, whatever you're doing in Poetry right now, this is the synopsis, whatever you're doing right now, you can continue doing it across the board. So if you're worried about, "Is this allowed? I've got a workshop in the back, is this allowed? I've got a business already established, is this allowed? I've got a home that's right next to the property line, is that allowed?" It's all allowed. It's all grandfathered in, nobody's gonna come knocking at your door demanding you move your house, that's not gonna happen. And this isn't even a poetry thing, that's a state law. So thankfully, not even a mean future council could change that. And we've talked about newer businesses and larger businesses, like I said, we can protect against that somewhat, if they build behind the town limits, there's nothing you can really do about that, they can go in the business district somewhat. Now, you're probably wondering, can they put anything in B1? Can I wake up tomorrow and have a giant, you know, 100,000 square foot paper mill in B1 tomorrow? I mean, that's, those are some big lots. The answer to that is probably not. Any new businesses need to come before the town council and get their approval that are large. So just to clarify again, not your mom and pops, not your cottage industry that you're running outside of your house, but any large corporate organizations are not gonna just be able to invade our town without warning. At least they'll have to come to the town council. Now, the town council doesn't have authority to just deny it because they don't like their socks and shoes. But if we have approvable reason that it would harm people, maybe it's, you know, a meat treating facility that's gonna be putting pollutants in the air, or something of that nature, then maybe we'll be able to fight against that. Again, our power is very limited to help everyone, and that's my bad news for tonight, is we're not gonna be able to stop at all, but at least we've got a shot now. I think we've hit most of the highlights. The driveway bit has been getting a lot of attention, I got a lot of emails about that. There really isn't much in there. Really, the only notable thing is that we said one driveway per house, so, and that is a concrete driveway, one concrete driveway per house. So you can have your, you know, gravel driveway lead into your barn, that's completely fine. That's a very new section, the council has never reviewed as a whole the driveway section. I hope the council is as eye and very open to change that if we need to tonight, especially that section. Pretty much the idea behind that was just to prevent development. Again, you'll kind of see a repeating theme with why we're doing what we're doing, or overdevelopment, I should say. I'm gonna go real quick through the Q and A sheet. We sent this out, but not everybody got it, because some people are here that lived in the ETJ and weren't on the mailing list. And I just want everybody to kind of have some of their basic questions answered. So I'm gonna read through that, I'm gonna try to fire through this quick and wrap up, this is the last thing I have to say here. And it says, "Why is the town zoning my property?" And it says, "The zoning proposed is the most minimal zoning that we can pass while having the tools to maintain the integrity of Poetry as we know it. We want as few rules as possible while protecting our town from excessive development and industrial growth." Next question is, "Will this affect my ag, or agricultural property tax exemption?" No. Nothing done here will ever affect your county ag exemption. The town will never, ever have anything to do with it, no matter what your property's classified as here, no matter what we pass, will not affect that whatsoever. "Does zoning apply to all my property?" Probably not. There are very few properties that are only within the town boundaries, in fact, I don't know if there's any. In all honesty, this is kind of a front yard ordinance, if you will, which is why we're a little limited on preventing congestion and development and big businesses from coming in, because we, this only has to do with 311 feet, that front 311 feet of most y'all's property. So no, it probably doesn't affect all your property. Says, "I have a family living on my property and other houses, how does this affect me?" The answer is, if the building is already constructed, you're okay, just like anything else. Again, this is for future builds. This whole ordinance is for future builds, future businesses. Y'all are all grandfathered in, I'm grandfathered in, they're grandfathered in. This is not gonna stop us using it the way we have been using it. But for future builds, they require two-and-a-half acres a lot. So five acres, two houses. 15 acres, six houses. If you like my sister with 25 acres, that's 10, 10 houses you could put on that one piece of land. So you can do quite a few, in fact, I hope people don't do that many, honestly. It says, "None of my buildings are within the town limits, does zoning still apply to me?" Again, zoning only applies to current or future buildings in the town hall, in the town limit. "The town limit goes right through my house, what does this mean for me?" And it says, "Your current house is fine, future buildings in the town limit would not need to comply." Kind of went over that, there it is again. "I've already started building, but, and it doesn't comply with the new regulations. Does that, what does that mean for me?" And this is also pretty important. Anything that is currently in the process is gonna be allowed to continue and be fully constructed. There's good and there's bad of that. If you just constructed, if you just paid for a piece of property to pull electrical over, to build a house right next to the Poetry town line, or right next to the road where it wouldn't be allowed, because you've spent money and time on that, you can continue building that to your heart's content. But what that also means, and we're glad that you can do that, but what that also means is that any developments that have spent $1 at this point can continue building that development until they're done. So the giant development D.R. Horton's working on, nothing we can do about it. Bishop Airfield, nothing we can do about it. They're gonna finish that out, but, you know, that has some good and some bad. And then, "I'm in a different zoning than my neighbor, why is that, how does it affect me?" And like we said, the town is broken up into four zones, three residents and one for business. The three residential zones are for properties zero to two-and-a-half acres, two-and-a-half to five acres, and five-plus acres. Unless you're wanting to subdivide your property, it has practically no effect on you if you're in the pink, purple, or green zone. That's really just for developers. And that's kind of the rundown here, let's see if I missed anything. Somebody mentioned road expansion, that is an old plan. Thankfully, zoning is not the only thing we're doing to try to keep our town the way it is today. The county was wanting to expand, and was working with the state to expand 1565 to four lanes, and also, which one is it, the, one of these other roads, County Road, no. There were, this one, forgive me for not remembering the name, but this one, to four to six, hm?
Nine to six.
Thank you. This, they were looking to expand that, to be between four and six lanes, which blew my mind. And they were also looking to create a curve through our town, and we're going to take the property away from the property owners through eminent domain. It was gonna be awful. Thankfully, the council addressed it, I went up with Mayor Tara, and we talked, and just talking and fighting for Poetry made them change their plans. So that's not gonna happen anymore. The roads aren't gonna be expanded, it's not gonna cut through, so to answer your question there, that was an old plan, it's resolved now. Hopefully, we can keep electing councils that care, and we'll continue fighting, because there's nothing to stop them from changing the plans in the future. All right, I'm done talking, thanks. Thank you all for your time, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Simeon. Okay, so at this time, the council is gonna go through page by page and discuss things on the pages that we have issue with, and then, so listen, if you will, so then hopefully if you have questions, the answer in this process, okay? All right, on page one, council, is there anything that you want to discuss on page You got a name?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, let's flip to page two, then.
You're not gonna erase it?
No.
Unless y'all got a lot of time on your hands.
No, that's gonna take too long. All right, so page two, council, is there anything that you...
I got a question.
Okay.
Under section 1.2, is this boilerplate language, I understand we're trying to keep this concise, but 1.2.3 concerns me. I don't see how we have the ability to secure safety from fire panic and other dangers with this zoning document, 1.2.8, same. 1.2.9, minimize loss due to destruction by the nature and acts of God. Obviously, this zoning document does not protect us from acts of God, so if this language doesn't need to be in here, let's go ahead and clean it up now.
David, is that in state law somewhere? What is that?
Yes, one button, I have a hard time operating it. Those are paraphrasing or reprints out of exactly what state law says, it's in chapter 2.
So they have to be in here?
They don't have to be in there, but it's what state law, it's fundamental purposes among the many, but some of the purposes of zoning regulations are supposed to accomplish, but it comes right out of state law.
And so how would a zoning, like to his point, how would zoning secure us from fire, panic, and other dangers? Can you think of any?
A dense subdivision is more prone and more susceptible to fire than a less dense subdivision. Keeping or decentralizing industrial uses, or high-intensity commercial uses, and keeping them separate and apart from residential uses protects the town and the townspeople from fire, hazard, and minimizing damage from acts of God and nature, things like
It doesn't affect the document, but as we authored our first document that could possibly get passed, if we're sitting here saying that we got a whittled-down 17-page document as opposed to a 300-page document, and we only have the meat and potatoes in there, I just don't see the need for it. How's council feel?
So the safety and security, I think, is probably valid, the minimize loss due to destruction by nature or acts of God, I mean, I'm okay with striking that.
What about facilitating the adequate provisions of transportation, water, sewer schools, parks, and other public requirements that we don't offer?
Yeah, we don't have any of those.
I don't have a problem striking it.
Yeah. All right, our first strike of the night, is everyone in agreement on that? Okay. Yeah, those, so 1.2.8, facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other, or other public requirements, and we're striking that, and then 1.2.1, promote health, safety morals, and general...
No, 1.9.
Oh, 1.9, minimize loss due to destruction, okay, of, by nature or acts of God. Okay, so 1.2.8 and 1.2.9.
It just got a little bit shorter.
All right, anything else? Okay, if not, we'll go move on to page three. Page three has designated that AR is agrarian, farm cattle, land, or large residential property is equal to or greater than five acres. The SF, E is single-family estate, it's mid-sized residential properties, 2.5 to less than five acres. Single-family is small residential properties, 1 to less than 2.5. It does have to be 1 for the SEPTIC code, that is Kaufman County and Hunt County requirement, it must be at least one acre. Businesses, light retail and neighborhood services. So any issues with this page three?
Simeon, you said there's a little inconsistency on the frequently asked question. You said less than two acres and between two and five, but this is two and a half, so is the number two or two and a half?
It's two and a half, I apologize for the Q and A.
That's fine, I just wanna make sure what I'm going with.
It was two for so long, I got used to the number.
I just want to point out, I don't think it needs to be changed, the last sentence in the business district, compatible relationships with, between non-residential use and development, and adjacent residential use, I wanna, when we get to the chart in the back, I just want everybody to keep that in mind, what that language says.
And that's for things like the giant paper mill, or, you know, slaughterhouse, or something like that.
Well, that's still, it's subjective, when you're considering a compatible relationship.
It is, it's gonna be up to the council to decide that, and with a lot of legal help, I would imagine.
So section 3.1, I think that's gonna be my biggest sticking point tonight on zoning. "The proposed boundaries of zoning districts set out here and are delineated upon the zoning district map of the town of Portry." Can anyone show me what zoning's gonna affect besides those thin, black lines over there on that map?
Within those lines is the town proper, so that's the only place zoning affects.
So I'm leading you a little bit, just to get to my point. Chapter 41 of Local Government Code, Mr. Berman, are you familiar with it? I'll give you a copy if not, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I don't have a Wi-Fi connection in here.
Okay.
But, go ahead and...
We can get you one.
So, chapter 41 of the Local Government Code is municipal boundaries and annexations. In particular, section 41.002, and I'll pass this around if y'all want to read it with your own eyes, but I'll read it for you verbatim. 41.002 is boundary surveys in a general law municipality.
We'll ask the sound.
Immediately after the members of the governing body of a newly incorporated general law municipality qualify for office, that was May of 2020, the governing body shall adopt an ordinance requiring a survey of the boundaries of the municipality to be made. The survey must be based on boundaries designated in the petition for incorporation. The field notes of the survey must be recorded... The field notes of the survey must be recorded in the minutes of the municipality, and in the deed records of the county in which the municipality is located. So, um, I've been verbal about this in, in other situations. I've been an advocate for hiring an engineering firm. I don't think we can legally sit here and.
Zone our city until.
Until we have, uh, a, a map that state statute, uh, forty-one point zero zero two addresses, council.
Agreed. Uh, Mr. Berman?
I'm sorry, ask the question one more time, 'cause this has to do with incorporation, doesn't have to do with, doesn't have to do with the adoption of zoning regulations.
Okay, but, if we, if we're gonna zone, we have to know our boundaries. Chapter forty-one point zero zero two clearly defines how you get those boundaries.
So, you're kind of off topic.
No, I'm not. We're talking about zoning.
Order, order, there will be no tackling, please.
The survey must be based on the boundaries designated in the petition for incorporation.
Okay.
Now, that was before my time, but I, I, I have to assume that when the petition for incorporation was submitted to the county asking for an election, that it had a survey attached to it.
You're skipping A, though.
It did.
You're skipping A. Read A.
Mr. Berman, could you speak into this speaker a little bit more, please?
Yeah, it's hard to read.
Well, since after incorporation, you adopt an ordinance that requires a survey. If, if you have a survey.
We don't have a survey.
Okay, upon incorporation, we did, yes.
We do not have a survey.
There's a survey.
Okay.
Citizens have asked for it, councils asked for it, we do not have a survey.
Okay, this is off-topic.
Well, I think.
All right, so.
I think to Terry's point, though, that, you know, if we, if we have this mechanism that's going to enforce behavior, and the standard by which it's being compared is a survey, we need to know. If we tell somebody their house is too close, or too big, or too something else, we have to be comfortable that we have accurate information that we can compare that to.
Okay, Stovall Engineering gave an official survey that Hunt County approved upon the election, uh, passing of the incorporation election. We've been over and over this.
It's not a survey.
It, it was certified by Hunt County. We were, it's out, it was out of, all right, order! I am trying to speak and explain, and I keep getting cut off, okay? So, please refrain from that.
There was a survey by a survey company that says "survey" on it, and it describes the meets and bounds, and has a map, and tells us how far back from each part of the road, and it was used for incorporation.
The incorporation documents.
Wait a minute, if it was good enough for Hunt County, you're saying it's not good enough for our town?
So, what I'm saying is the difference, because B, what Mr. Berman alluded to, the survey must be based on boundaries designated, it doesn't say a survey designated in the petition. It was boundaries, and what you're talking about in the incorporation documents are merely boundary points, they are not survey points.
Okay, so, this, again, Hunt County approved the survey. We, because they handled the incorporation. Hunt County handled it, it's on them. So, they approved it, and, and so, they were in charge of the election, they were in charge of the survey. Stovall Engineering provided the survey. So, again, this is off-topic?
It's not off-topic, Tara.
It is off-topic. It's completely off-topic.
Here's why I say that, and I'm not trying to argue with you tonight, we have a long night ahead of us. Mike said it best, but it's, it's boiled down to, if we're going to enforce zoning laws on people, we have to know where we're enforcing them. I don't feel that we know, as council, where we're enforcing zoning.
Okay. There, refrain, come on, we need, we need order in the chamber, please.
I have a question for Attorney Berman. If we ignore the map that's used for that purpose, then we wouldn't know, but we are told the meets and bounds.
No, we are not told meets and bounds.
Well, I have attached meet and bounds on one of my renditions. Obviously, I didn't bring it tonight, 'cause that's way back in the file, but.
So, we've been doing this for two and a half years, Terry, so why don't you discuss this back six months ago?
She did.
So, but, before we come and we go to the expense of a thousand dollars to, to mail, do mailouts, I mean, it's a little bit, I, I feel like you're, you're sabotaging this before.
And that's how you're gonna spend this, but I have asked.
So, so, all right.
I, I have asked for the survey, I've asked for an engineering firm. We have an engineering firm, there's no need to rush. This engineering firm can look at our document and see if it is meeting the state statute that we're obligated to withhold.
That has already been done, Terry.
By who? Show me.
By Stovall Engineering, they met with Hunt County Judge, the Commissioners' Court approved it. How many times did we have to say?
I wanna see the survey.
It's online.
Very specifically.
All right, hey, hey, you are, you are out of line.
Now, from.
You are out of line, please.
Now, didn't it say we had to use our incorporation survey anyways? Like, even if we did a future one, we need to use the incorporation survey.
The county judge even said it's not a survey.
Can I ask my question to Attorney Berman?
Okay, Jonathan, go ahead.
Are we talking about enforcement? Is that an issue in this document? Whether we can enforce it or not?
It would be an issue in, I don't know, in a court in which we were ticketing somebody or suing for an injunction. If someone says that within our city's limits, our city, if we have a city map, that map is presumably valid. Unless there's an ordinance, I'm sorry, a lawsuit that, that seeks its declaratory judgment to contest the validity of our election when we first incorporated.
We're not questioning that.
I don't know if there is a survey or not. The mayor says yes, Terry, you say no, a whole bunch of people out here say no. I don't know if there's a survey or not, but, but, from my perspective, going forward, we've got a town map, and, and we go by that, and that's what a, a court would rely on in determining, in determining what our boundaries were in the context of the enforcement of the zoning regulations.
Well, section forty-one point zero zero one, our map's in violation, Mr. Berman.
You were misinterpreting that to your own.
Is there a lawsuit?
I'm quoting another law, Tara.
Okay, are you, are you a lawyer?
No, but I can read the state statute that I'm, I've, I've sworn to withhold, uphold this.
Okay, order, order, order. So, so Judge Stovall and the Commissioners' Court went through the survey that was provided by the Stovall Engineering. All right, so, okay, so, all right, stop. And he approved the surveyor's report. Now, it would be cost prohibitive for any town to do an original hundred percent survey on each property within the town. That's just cost prohibitive for any town.
Every town does that.
I, I don't think you're accurate with that.
Comment, please. No, no town, no city does a survey of every single.
No city does what he's asking.
We're not asking that. We're asking a boundary survey, guys. Mr. Berman, do you understand what I'm asking for?
I, I do. The answer to your question, at least if you're asking me. I don't know if we have a survey or not. But I, but I do know that there. But I do know that there is not a lawsuit pending that contests the validity of our, of our incorporation.
But before we can ever enforce any of the zoning, we have to know where that boundary is. If we're gonna have a setback from the front row, from the road, we have to know where that is, do we?
That's what I'm saying. We have a town map, we'd go by our town map.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to point out to you. Section forty-one point zero zero one says our, our maps are not up to date. It says, municipality that annexes territory, that's the voluntary that you were talking about, we've had one, uh, that they must immediately update their maps. It even goes on to say about the annexation, if a municipality's extraterritorial jurisdiction is expanded or reduced, the map shall be immediately corrected.
Right, but we did correct the map. If, if, if we annex one piece of property at some point after incorporation, I'm gonna wait for the background noise to calm down before I answer the question.
Okay, we need an order in the, in the assembly, please.
All right, so, if we annexed one piece of property, and we did not amend our map, and we did not adopt a new map, that doesn't render the entire map invalid. It may render it invalid as to that tract of property, but doesn't make the whole thing get thrown in the trash. It's still a map of the town limits, so, if you're, if you're talking about other tracts of land in connection with, among other things, enforcement of zoning regulations, the map is still good. Tara, I wanna address something you just said a minute ago, a little accusational towards Terry. You said that, why is he bringing up the map? I've been on the council since its inception, and I believe it was the first meeting that we had two and a half, three years ago, that we started raising concern about the map, 'cause I jokingly called it the cartoon map, because I, I didn't believe in its legitimacy. So, we have brought this up a dozen times, if we brought it up once. So, I don't think it's fair to say that we've, I'm not doing it for applause. I don't think it's fair to say that we've never raised concerns. I think concerns have been raised.
Okay, we just are tonight going to hire an engineering firm, but again, Stovall Engineering did have the meets and bounds that did pass Commissioners' Court, that did meet the qualifications of this ruling. So, you know, we had one voluntary annexation, we had modified the map, do we need the engineering to go forward and, and help us with that? Absolutely. That's not, that's not an argument here. But to go back to the incorporation again, I think that that is, I, I think, I wanna go forward, I don't wanna go back. And so, again, we, again, it met the requirements, and we have people who have been trying to denigrate this town from day one, and I feel like this is part of that. So, 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 you know, okay, please.
Ms. Hibs, you asked me to take action, not being a strong.
That's your second warning. It's your second warning, Ms. Hibs.
You're interrupting my meeting.
I'm sorry. So, I go around you, why?
Okay, that's your second warning, Ms. Hibs.
Well, and so, to the point, Tara, of, and somebody pointing out from the audience, we don't have a specific survey. If I build a structure on my land, and the city deems that it's in violation of setback or something else, how can I be assured when you come out with a measuring tape that you're measuring from the right point of reference? I mean, we don't know, I, I mean, I think it's incumbent on us to have the means to prove where our bounds, you know, boundaries are, and.
Okay, I hear you. So, the point of beginning and point of ending, so, when, guess what? When we had to put the signs out, we had to measure exactly where those signs for the beginning and the ending of the town were. So, we measured the point of ending and the point of beginning, those are survey points, and we put them exactly at three hundred and eleven-foot mark. They are exact, okay? And so, that, that, we use the survey points from the Stovall surveying, point of beginning and point of ending. The map that's online has those. That is, that is the, the official survey that has been installed upon our incorporation. And I keep saying that, and, and you guys don't wanna believe it. Now, do we need to, going forward, have, have a, a survey engineer maybe give us a dressed-up map? Sure. That's not a question here.
Could you answer me the section B, then, and, and tell me how that applies? It says the survey must be based on the boundaries designated in the petition. It doesn't say the survey that was designated in the petition for incorporation, it says the boundaries.
Yeah, so, we had three, uh, three petitions upon our incorporation, and we had a map that showed the boundaries, okay? And each time that that map was changed, the boundaries were changed for any reason, we had to do another petition.
Now, I'd also like to bring up a point, this is what I was trying to say earlier, Mr. Terry, is if we do another survey, by the strict reading of that, I don't think we could use the other survey. It says the bounds of incorporation, that, not a future survey that the town council decides to do sometime, but the incorporation one. What we had for incorporation is what we have to use by strict reading of that.
Well, I think even, even if I accept that we have an originating survey, I think we, most of us would acknowledge we've made quite a few changes to that over time. We found some errors, and we found some other things. Well, that survey has never been amended as a matter of record, so even if I accept the going-in argument, there's still an issue with what about all the changes subsequent to that initial survey? I mean, those haven't been validated by anybody other than the person drawing our map.
Okay, so, let me, let me answer that as best I can. Okay, so Dorothy Dillon, a geographical information systems specialist who did very well, A-plus student, was our expert mapmaker in, in all of that. When she developed that map, there were several renditions, right? So, when you say that there were several renditions, they were, okay? But we locked that in, then it went to the surveyor after incorporation, he surveyed it out, and he said, hey, I'm, on the survey points, I'm gonna back off on this a little bit. That official, where it says point of beginning, point of ending, that is the locked-in survey points. That is the official map, not, not the one that Dorothy, you know, five versions that she was working on, 'cause, you know, there was a lot to it, it took hundreds of hours. Of course, there's gonna be edits, okay? And there was, some of those maps were floating around, but the, the one that's online, it has a point of beginning, point of ending, that is the official survey map. That is the official, based on him. He took her GIS map, and then he, he provided the meets and bounds, he provided the point of beginning, point of ending, and Stovall, um, survey did that. The judge and the court, court signed off on it, and that's our official map.
Well, but I think you're, you're talking prior to the, the granting of our incorporation, since that, and while this council has been sitting, we have made changes. I mean, I have copies of them. I have, here's one where this is included, and here's one where it's not. We left out some little corners and little cul-de-sac-looking things.
Okay, so, again, you're looking at copies of, from Dorothy's renditions, that a lot of those were floating around. Once the surveyor put a stamp of a seal on it, that point of beginning, he had meets and bounds, and he has listing for each street, meets and bounds, and then, we have it on our website, I believe, unless it's taken, been taken down, but we had it on our website for a long time. And remember seeing those? So, the meets and bounds, and that was our official survey, so that map is our official map. Now, I can't help if they're special, um, you know, if all those other prior renditions were floating around, they were. And so, there was.
But they're not, I mean, they're not clandestine. I mean, they were on our poetryTexas.org website, represented as our official map, and then a week later, a different one would pop up that had an area now in the town. I mean, it happened two or three times.
Okay, so, have, have you ever made an error on a website?
Well, I, that's.
I'm just saying, sometimes there are errors, but again, we have.
Well, it's not my point, so if, if, my only point is if those are, are, those are earlier representations of the map that Dorothy had, we were the ones portraying them as an accurate depiction of the town's boundaries, not, I mean, it's not willy-nilly, it's we were putting them out there. It's our website, you know, you're.
Okay, so, so, yes, there are, there were some earlier renditions that were in error put on the website, but again, the map that's currently on there, it has POV, POE, and the meets and bounds, and that is the official map.
That map's not stamped.
The, the, it doesn't have to be. The surveyor approved that, the Commissioners' Court voted on it and approved that. And so, I, I've said this over and over, and you guys keep going back to, oh, we have all these, of course, we had renditions. We had several renditions before the incorporation. But again, we've gotten way off-topic here, folks, and I just, and I, David, I, I, this, you know, is way off-topic.
I have a couple of questions. One for the council, since I wasn't here during the first term. You talk about having a engineering firm or survey firm do a survey. Did y'all ever go through the process of trying to hire one? Was that done only after I?
It was requested multiple times and shot down as unnecessary, because we kept being told that, you know, what we have is sufficient, and.
There was an official agenda item to talk about it?
Well, yeah, I think it's been on the agenda a couple of times. It's certainly been in our conversation.
You tell me where it's been.
And it got, and it got voted, it got voted down?
We've never had an agenda item of finding an engineer that I can recall, but again, it takes money to do that. We are a baby town. It takes money to hire an engineer, they're hundreds of dollars just like an hour, they're even more expensive, I found out, than, than an attorney. So, but I, you keep saying, they are, yeah.
Mr. Berman, I'd like to, Mr. Berman, I'd like to say.
There is no recognition from the floor at this time. It's the public hearing. No, sir, there is no recognition at this time.
No, 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 hang on, hang on, let's, let's, we're getting way, way off-track here. This is not a public.
Okay.
This is, this is not a public hearing, this is an open meeting.
It is a public hearing.
All right, Ms. Hibs, that's your third warning.
Mr. Berman.
When we reach the agenda item dealing with.
That is your third and final warning, Ms. Hibs, I'm sorry, but.
Would it make sense for you to step back and take a look at this in thorough, and
tell us, do we have an issue, do we not?
Turn it on. Y'all need to calm down, this is a church facility, y'all need to listen to the city council, and they will address y'all whenever they get done, okay? That's your first warning, I'm just asking y'all to calm down. We let y'all come here to have these meetings because everywhere else is full, so let's please respect this facility. Thank you.
Yes, sir, we're trying, yes. All right, so, Officer...
The, the, the public, the public hearing...
No, it's churches, us, read the Bible, us.
The public, the public hearing will begin when we reach the zoning ordinance. This is an open meeting that has not been yet opened up for citizens' comment. So, I'm sorry, Tom, what was your question?
Yeah, Mr. Berman, I'm just asking, in the interest of time, among other things, would it make sense for you to step back and take a look at this question, the issue? Do we have an issue or not? If we do have an issue, as raised by Mr. Berman, what should we do? But it, not at this meeting here, but to come back to us?
We can't do it at this meeting.
I'm sorry?
We're not, we're not, yeah, exactly, we cannot do it at this meeting because we're not teed up for that. For, for the people that contest or disagree with the incorporation of the town of, for the people that disagree with the incorporation of the town of Poetry, they've got a couple of choices, they can...
We need, we need order, order, please.
They can file a lawsuit contesting, contesting the incorporation, or they can vote for council members that will approve the disincorporation of the town. But until they do one of those two things, that's not an issue for tonight.
This is about a map, and if we are in accordance to the state law...
I understand that, if we've got a map and...
I need order in the, in the assembly, please.
Let's take it all the way back to the original question. If we have an official map, that's what we're going to go by when we enforce zoning regulations. Period.
Okay, so, Terry, this is a, this is, I, I feel like this is way off topic, and so, let's move on. All right, page three, any others, any other amendments? We gave way too much time to that topic, I believe, and our attorney agrees. All right, page three, any other? All right, page four, any, any other, for council, it is council's time, any other for council?
Subsection six, signage, it rolls over to page seven, so if y'all want to stop me, but page six runs into page seven. I wanted a question about the 160 square feet of signage per building. That seems like a relatively small number, does anybody realize what 160 square feet looks like? I think you just missed me. So, two of these I-beam, or three I-beams, that's 50 feet. So, if you just came in a little bit, you could have a four, a four-feet-by-40-feet sign, just so council understands what that looks like. Or for easier math, it's 10 by 16. If we're talking about on a business that's 20-foot tall, that's half the building height in your signage.
So, are you saying that it's too much?
That's way too much.
Well, part of, part of that was a facility that may rent several businesses and they have smaller signs.
I think it needs to be reworded than that.
Okay, that's...
This is why she's been escorted out. Order, thank you.
So, so, in my mind, I get your point, and I knew that's the direction y'all were going, total signs, but it, it needs some kind of, not one sign will exceed X-square feet.
That's, that's not hard to add, is it, Simeon?
So, the...
No, that's easy. What did you think, Mr. Terry?
Yeah, what's, what kind of, what number?
I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be reasonable for...
I thought about a four-by-eight sheet of plywood, and that's 32 square feet. Yeah, is that too small?
No, I mean, I think your 40 to 50-square-feet range is fine, but also, I don't know if this is where you need to talk about how many lumens can come from that sign, because if you fill that thing with LEDs, over there on 276, if you're ever driving in the morning, you can hardly drive down the road because of the lumens, so... I don't know if that needs to be added later or what, but I wanted everybody to realize that if somebody chooses to do a 160-foot, square-foot sign, that is a large sign.
Well, that's true, it is a very large sign. I will say for this, there was a little bit of strategy that tried to go into it, mostly because a zoning ordinance is really hard to change, and we wanted to be as easygoing, as non-restrictive as we could. We might one day want to do an additional sign ordinance in addition to this. I think a lot of towns have that independent, I think that's a reasonable thing, you mentioned some good things about lumens and the like. I'm, I'm all for looking into that. You know, we could add, we could make some edits to this, or we could just have a different ordinance for that, so we could really dig into it deep and kind of just have this as the bones.
An opinion, Attorney Berman, about having a separate ordinance as...
Yeah, in, in some cities, the sign regulations are incorporated within their comprehensive zoning ordinances, in other cities, they're kept separate as, as part of their business regulations. The difference is that if it's, if it's within your comprehensive zoning ordinance, to amend your sign regulations will require multiple public hearings. If you have it in your regular, in your business regulations, you can just simply amend it with a posted three-day notice and do it on the spot. It's a lot easier to amend a sign regulation if it's not within the zoning regulations.
I think originally, we had this at 100 square feet, and then we were looking at some of the businesses in town, there was one business that, I think the Poetry Postal Storage had three signs, and we were trying to be as liberal as possible, we didn't want to hurt any of our current business owners, but if, and then it says it shall not exceed 20 percent of the square footage of the wall on which it's erected, so that is kind of a safeguard too, though.
Still a large sign. You can see a piece of plywood over there, Tara, imagine that piece of plywood from one I-beam to the third I-beam.
Yeah, it's a 10 by 16.
No, I'm saying if we're looking at a four-by-40, one piece of plywood all the way down to that wall.
It, it does say the total signs, not total sign.
Well, you can have one.
But when it says total signs, is that, is that specific enough that we're talking about signs and not signs?
There's nothing that regulates one sign, then.
It could probably just be one sign, and I think I'm with you, Mr. Terry, I, I think that's probably too big. I, I personally would look at a different ordinance for that, but I'm all for, if you're really passionate about getting just a limit on one particular sign in there, then I'm open to that.
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of taking this out and creating a sign ordinance if we have an issue that just sort of dictates behavior of signs throughout the town, because I think it, it's kind of confusing in here. I think we're talking about land and structures and things like that, not steeples and signs and other things, so...
Attorney Berman, do we, do we have to reference that we're going to have a sign ordinance at some time, or can we just strike all this?
Strike it all together. We understand that if you do, though, if this is adopted tonight, and you don't have sign regulations on the books, then, you're right where we are tonight anyway, where we've been for two years, so, yeah.
So, the...
Can we have these as the bones and elaborate on it in the different ordinance?
Sure, yeah, you can.
So, the idea was to keep big billboards out of town, but the 10 by 16 is, is rather large, but again, you know, there's 100-foot signs that are much larger, and we just don't want to see those around town. But if you guys are open to maybe reducing that to some number, then I think we're open to that. I just think that if we're going to avoid, because ordinances sometimes, I don't even know if it'll pass, but ordinances sometimes take a while, and we could have all kinds of things crop up in the interim. So, do you have a number you're thinking?
You could just add the, add the language, not one singular sign will exceed, if we want to call it 40, we want to call it 60, it needs to be something smaller. I get the point that in case of a strip center or multiple businesses being in one building, but it needs to have not one singular sign shall exceed.
So, if you had, say, three signs on one building, such as one of our businesses does, we didn't want to restrict that business, and so, if they had an eight-by-10, you know...
But they're legal non-conforming if this passes tonight, it doesn't change what they have.
Yeah, but I really don't want them in that category. I mean, if they had a business...
Fixing to put a lot of people in that category.
No, that's why we tried to be very non-restrictive, so that we have less than...
So, we need to add the language, not one single sign exceeding how many square feet, what's a good number?
Maybe 120, a 10-by-12?
No, that's, I'm, I'm thinking like a sheet of plywood, but...
I think one of my signs was 10-by-12.
I just, I see this, this need is way down the road. Why don't we just do another sign ordinance separate, and then, so we can move on tonight?
I agree with that.
I would do that.
Okay?
Strike it, strike 6.2 and have a...
Strike it, but what's your, what's your numbers, though, anyway?
I mean, we, we need to look at it, I don't know, I need to...
Yeah, but it's just win, it's a long ways away.
Yeah.
So, so, just address it differently, when we don't have all these other issues to do.
Okay, let's strike it.
Do y'all want to strike it or just keep it in there? Because we know it's going to be at least this.
But if we keep it, to Berman's point, it takes a lot of effort to change it.
But then, this is a, a very loose kind of thing, so it would restrict...
It's too loose, is what he's saying.
I know, but then you can always, can you always make it harder with the ordinance? Or do you have to, you can't?
We'd have to repeal it.
You would, okay. So, what is your suggestion, Mr. Berman?
I'm sorry?
What would be your suggestion if we want to spin...
Leave it in there like it is now, it makes it easier. To repeal it, there is a bit of an effort, we'll have to publish notice. We don't have a planning and zoning commission, so we'll have to have one public hearing after published notice. Leave it in there now so that we have something on the books, and then work on, at least we have something on the books.
Till we go to 100 square feet or something.
And then work on sign regulations at a later point in time, at your leisure.
Excuse me, if we made one that was more stringent?
If we adopted a, a, a non-zoning regulation that was, that was more restrictive, then it would have conflicting regulations.
Okay, so...
But that's why we worded it.
What is one that you normally see? What is the amount of square footage that you, is commonly seen?
I don't understand.
For, on this, he's saying that 160 square feet per building is quite a bit, but it's not supposed to exceed 20 percent of the square footage, I feel like that already...
Sign regulations in cities are so different and so complicated, this is a really straightforward one.
This is to keep us rule, light down, lumens down, I mean, I want it small, that's just my, everybody gets to say. Okay, so, let's just double the four-by-eight sheet and call it 64 square feet. Not one singular sign could be larger than 64 square feet.
So, that's an eight times eight, that's an eight times eight sign?
Yeah, or four by 16.
Right, well, I'd be interested to hear what citizens have to say to that.
We'll find it, we'll find out.
Do you want to put it on there tentatively, just kind of the rest of the council, okay with that?
Not to exceed, not to exceed 64 square feet.
That's any one sign, so they can have...
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to know what some of our business owners were thinking about that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on that page?
Are we on seven or six?
We're on five.
Page four. On five, page five.
Moving over to five, right?
Well, no, before we get off of page four, so, 6.1, grandfathering, I want to add clarification to what you said, Simeon, when you were standing up doing your presentation, and you can debate me here if I'm wrong, but we've had conversation in the last year about grandfathering in the context of P&amp;Z, and my understanding was, non-conforming grandfather status means you don't have to tear the building down, but you cannot make any material changes to the building either.
Generally, you can maintain, but you can't expand, you cannot enlarge.
Right, so I couldn't, I couldn't add a pergola or a porch or...
You could not expand, if the building, if the structure were a non-conforming structure, you could not expand the structure.
Right.
You can maintain it and make internal...
But the way that we have it written further in the document kind of makes that different.
Well, that's a really good point, though.
I just want to make sure that it's not seen as a pass, it's not really, in my words, a pass, it's just like a temporary something with the understanding that that, nothing about that building changes, or it immediately falls out of grandfather and becomes subject to P&amp;Z.
Well, it, it can change, it just can't expand, and that is something really notable. A good trusted friend of mine brought up that we changed it from 105, or was it 110-feet setbacks, down to this tiny 75, and that's so there's only two houses that fall into that, and for those two houses, they could expand in the back if they wanted to expand, because their back isn't that close to the road, they're just barely in that 75 feet.
So, so, if they're non-conform, well, if they're already here and they want to expand, I thought in the, the, further in the document, we have where if it's over 150 percent of the cost, then they can go ahead and...
If it, if it is damaged or burns down, yes, they could probably actually expand based off that 150 percent. We kind of went against Mr. Berman's suggestion there, I'm sorry.
He had 50, and we want to make it as...
We just wanted to give as much freedom as possible.
So, I'm not, I'm not really good with, with that. I think that a person should be able to add on a coupler or add on a garage with, if they want to.
The section that you're talking about is 13.3, it's on page nine. It's really short and sweet, repairs and normal maintenance may be made to a non-conforming building or structure. If you want to expand on that or make changes to that, now's the time to talk about it.
Okay, so, so, the follow-up to that is if something besides the structure makes the property non-conforming?
There are three types of non-conformities, a non-conforming structure, a non-conforming lot, and a non-conforming use.
Okay, so, if they have a non-conforming lot, they could still expand on the house?
Yeah, that's a completely different issue. And I explain it to you by way of hypothetical, if you're in the single-family estate district and your lot's only two acres, not two and a half acres, and you got a house on it, you can build a house, expand, it's not, it has nothing to do with the house itself, it just has to do with the lot.
So, anything we have non-conforming will be, it would be explicitly written, it's a non-conforming because of one of those three reasons?
Yeah, there aren't very many things in our proposed zoning ordinance that would render a structure to be non-conforming.
Okay.
We don't have minimum structure sizes in here, I mean...
Yeah, we want to be real careful about that.
Yeah, we're trying to be good to our citizens, and then just protect ourselves from future undesirable things, so...
So, Simeon, you've, you've scrubbed the map and worked on this the longest.
Yes, sir.
You said that there's only two houses, two structures that are non-conforming.
That I could find.
Are there any other non-conforming anythings across this entire, if we implemented this tomorrow, was anybody going to have to move cows or change fences or modify driveways or...
None of that, there is one other exception besides the couple houses I could find, which, again, they could still expand in the back, it's the businesses. Not every business that's in town is allowed in this, straight out, like the wedding venue. So, to my understanding, the wedding venue couldn't build towards the road, if that clarifies things.
I think it goes backwards.
But as far as residents, no.
Okay, anything else on page five? Anything else on page six?
So, I was looking what page it was on, I thought you was talking sections, page five. Simeon, this is a question for you, because I, I know you, well, I heard you got the same texts and emails I got today.
Yes, sir.
So, on number seven, 7.1, the last, it looks like a paragraph, but it's just a bigger space line, the very last sentence says, "and may include other building structures incidental to agriculture use of, use, including barns, stables, loafing sheds, etc." The question that I received from the citizen, and I couldn't support one way or the other, is under SFEs, SFs, that, that language is not in their general description, and the concern is that they won't be able to have outbuildings, or they would be non-conforming.
Oh, that's, that's a legitimate point. They are allowed to have the outbuildings and accessory buildings all they want in all the districts. It's really, it's really just said twice in ag, honestly, it doesn't need to be in there. If you go to the table in Section 11, accessory buildings are allowed in all four of them, and there's no limit to the amount, so, it's kind of just redundant, it doesn't have to be in there.
But they're used for the purposes, right, for the permitted uses? The building has to, or the structure has to be part of the permitted uses, correct or no?
Everyone, I, I don't really know what you're asking, but everyone's allowed to do it across all zones, and ag or not. It really doesn't need to be said in that specific section, because it's spelled out in Section 11 for every zone, or you could put verbiage like that, and the rest.
So, is it the case, David, that anything that is not prohibited is allowed?
Yes, exactly how it works, and so, the fact that it doesn't say that you can have multiple accessory buildings in SFE means you can have multiple accessory buildings in SFE.
Yeah, that's intentional.
So, for example, we don't talk about thousand-foot radio towers, so if somebody could put up a thousand-foot radio tower, and it would be okay?
Yes.
Well, unless the FEC says...
If it's a permissible use.
Don't give them ideas.
No, I don't, you're right, I was just asking.
I think the FEC would have leverage with that.
And to clarify, by the way, no land shall be used and no structure shall be used except for the purposes authorized by the chapter. So, for example, if it's an, if it's a business district, you can only use a business district zone property for the specific uses that are enumerated in the code, it has to be specifically stated there.
And I guess my point was back to, if, if we don't specifically say you can have And I guess my point was back to, if, if we don't specifically say you can have outbuildings on residential property, you can.
Yes.
Because it doesn't say you can't.
Actually, it, it actually says you can.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's what section 11 is about, is that we actually do specifically say it, just because we wanted to, not because we had to, but we just wanted to be extra clear.
Yeah, but, but Mike, you're right, I mean, absent a prohibition, that means, if, it doesn't say that you're not allowed to, meaning you can do it.
Okay, so on page five, any other questions, concerns, comments from council? I guess on 7.4, a thought that I had, 7.4 says permitted uses solid, non-transparent fencing. The idea there was, we have a lot of people wanting to put up corrugated metal fencing, like right up next to the road. This may be multicolored even, and then I thought, you know, there might be a rock, I think there's a rock, I think, I guess it's just a gate entrance, though, it's not really fencing. So, we might need to qualify the fencing definition, because I was looking at an entrance that was quite nice. It was a rock entrance, but it was not really, it's a gate entrance, but it's rock, so that is solid.
Can we do that?
I don't think we say it's not allowed, though, because we're talking about the fencing.
Can we specifically say this material, but not that material?
When we.
We're not specifying building materials, it just says transparent or solid.
It says solid, non-transparent fencing.
Sheed-like rock.
No, no, I, I'm sorry if I was unclear.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just.
What I'm saying is, if we say it this way, solid, non-transparent fencing, that would include rock as well. And if someone has a rock entrance to their gate, I think we need to clarify it's not that. Is, what I, well, I think what this was intended to do is say, hey, we don't want a bunch of metal fencing right up next to the roadway that's, you know.
So, we, do we need to say gates need not apply or something like that?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you saying that we need to exclude gates from that, because gates sometimes have built-up rocks around them? Is that what you're saying?
Something like that, excluding.
Yeah, I, I read, what came to my mind was like a wrecking yard or that scrapyard on 276, where it's continuous for an extended distance, not just a little, you know.
That was the intent.
That was the intent.
True enough, it's not transparent, but it's not that big, I mean, you still see through the property.
So, that's what I'm saying is, for that, excluding gates entrance, you know, because there might be, I don't know.
Would another council interpret it the wrong way?
I just want to make it sure that it, it won't hinder a citizen who has some nice rock structure.
That's a good point.
You know, we're, we're trying to do good here, but if it, if it hinders a citizen, then I have an issue with that. So, if we need to.
Can we put a percentage?
Excluding gate entrance or percentage, across the front.
Could you do it where you limit it to a height for those typical, for those types of.
Well, some of them are very high.
Yeah.
Some are very high. No, actually, I'm not, but, but that's not what comes to mind, but.
We're going to get to the weeds, and we'll be here all week, not just a week.
So, okay, so I just wondered, okay, well, just excluding gate entrances, or do you think it's self-explanatory?
Well, what do you think, Mr. Berman, I mean?
I, I think it's as loose as it could be. I'm okay with having that requirement.
With having this requirement in there as written, I'm okay with it.
All right. Okay, so, anything else on page five? All right, page six? So, again, in each section, there is a solid, non-transparent fencing, and solar panels should not be placed or erected in the front yard setbacks. So, in the front part of your yard, you know, solar farms are taking over, and it's been a real problem with a lot of municipalities. So, just saying, hey, in that first front setback, you can just not have the solar to look at. They're not exactly, you know, that's, we're, again, we're trying to keep our area beautiful, and that's, that is where that came from. So, 10.1.
75 feet, but that's from the center line of the road, just to, we'll, we'll get into that a little bit. It's right at the back of.
We're not supposed to answer that.
Let's move on.
Oh, yeah, my bad, my bad.
All right, number.
I'm sorry, I'm just so used to it.
And will you go ahead and write that question down, please?
So, you're saying what's in our deed research is not allowed in the statute?
No, ma'am, we're not, but, but again, we'll have your time for questioning. Right now, she's going to write that question down or type it up, and that's a good one. Right now's the time for council to go over the document. Okay, ma'am, you're out of order. Ma'am, you're out of order. That's your second, second warning.
We can't even look at Article 6.
Okay, ma'am, it's not the time, you're being disruptive, and this is yours, if you're going to keep on, I'm going to give you second warning, the officer's right behind you, so if you're going to continue, all right. No, ma'am, I've given you two warnings, and you keep outbursting.
I just have a paper.
Okay. Okay, well, then, sign up to speak. Have you signed up to speak?
We will get to all the questions.
Okay, ma'am, you could sign up online or up to speak, but again, you're being disruptive. Everyone here is waiting for you to, to quiet down. All right, so if one more outburst, and you're going to be escorted out with the officer. You understand? Okay, all right. All right, so.
Page seven? Nope.
All right, number seven?
Page seven?
Page seven.
Okay, again, we're having disruption in the assembly. All right, permitted uses? If you're going to have a conversation, can you please go outside, because it's being disruptive? Thank you.
It's Mr. Benson.
Well.
Mr. Benson, can you please take her outside if you're going to have a conversation? It's being disruptive.
He's in his own world.
Out of order. Mr. Benson, can you please take her outside and talk with her? You're being disruptive. Thank you, sir. All right, so, number seven?
Page seven?
Page, page seven.
Page seven.
Page seven, sorry. 10.2 permitted uses?
So, David, am I correct in understanding that now we flip, now if it's not specifically allowed, it's not allowed?
No, 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 if there's a, if there's a blanket prohibition that says you can't do something, then generally you can. But in connection with the lists of permitted uses, you'll see that the language says that, that property may only be used for the following purposes. So, in connection with the use requirements, the zoning regulations are exclusive and not prohibitory, but mandatory. I think I got that right.
So, in the retail sales and personal service shops established, it says 10.2 clothing cloth shops under 2,500 feet, feed tack store, postal store service, restaurant serving food and beverages, self-storage, skincare or beauty or barber shops. Pretty limited, so anything else beyond that for retail would have to come for a special use permit, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Again, we're, we're trying to limit the types of businesses in some respects, so that the council and the people will get a say in that. All right, so, all right, anything else on? Number eight?
I guess we can go on.
Okay, number nine, page nine?
Simeon, do you want to explain 13.5 and the 150%?
Oh, yes, sure. So, here's another weird part of, of our ordinance is 13.5. Do you want me to read the whole thing?
No, just explain why we chose 150%.
I was about to say, I've got a speech ahead of me. But, pretty much, if the, if the nonconforming structure is damaged or destroyed by fire, flood, or other causes, other cities wouldn't let you reconstruct if it's damaged to a certain extent. We don't want to do that. We want to give as much freedom as possible. So, it allows for that structure to be repaired, the damage, I'm sorry, one second.
Three times the value.
Yeah, as long as it's, well.
150%.
One and a half times the value, so you could probably get some upgrades in the building, too. Not only could you build it back, but you could build it back nicer, and also inflation's a problem, so.
We didn't put that in there, because.
It just provides greater freedom in case something happens to one of the couple nonconforming structures in the town. It's not really going to affect many people, but we wanted to look out for everyone we could.
Can we just strike that entirely?
Yeah, you could, but don't know why, don't know why you would.
Well.
Yeah, the, the goal of, of nonconformities really is that they, they are lawful, pre-existing lawful uses. But over time, the expectation that the city would have is that, that the nonconforming uses or the nonconforming structures, over time will go away and that everything will become conforming. If you, if you eliminate, mostly say 50 to 75% within that range. If you eliminate that altogether, then if the nonconforming structure is damaged or destroyed, then it can just be built right back again, and regardless of the cost and the, the purpose of, of having structural requirements in the zoning regulations kind of goes away. So, I, yeah, you can't.
Well, if our purpose is not to harm our current citizens, but going forward to restrict it, then.
Well, I didn't, like, I'd be pretty much okay with striking it, just because it only applies to a couple people, but.
What about?
I thought the only thought was that if you put it out unlimited, then a trailer goes down and a developer buys it up, and a McMansion is put in replacement right next to the road. I mean, it doesn't apply to many, and I don't think that's likely, so I don't have a strong opinion.
I don't know that we have that many nonconforming, is what I'm saying, but we.
Right, we don't.
But, again, there's always the exception, and when we're trying to do good, there's always going to be that exception, and we're going to harm somebody, so I'm just.
We also don't really have much in the way of structural requirements in the first place. Not likely that a structure is going to be nonconforming anyway, except for its location on the lot.
So, we have the lot, so if there's a couple houses that are too close to the road, and that burns down, then they, you know, they can build in the same spot if it's not over 150% the ori, I guess, the tax value? We didn't really, we kind of left that gray.
Yeah, on purpose.
On purpose, left it kind of gray, so they could rebuild, but then if it, they wanted to build something a lot nicer, then they'd need to comply and, hey, put it, could it backfire, you know, if you can afford. The thought was there, and that was, I think, Jonathan's idea, is that the thought, if, if the structure, if they can afford 150%, then they could probably afford to put it on back, but that was the thought, I think.
You want to lower the percentage?
No.
I wouldn't lower it.
No?
No.
Okay, just checking. Terry, you had a.
I just keep questioning, everybody keeps saying, I think we only have a couple. I, I want to know how many nonconforming structures we have.
You said two, and then you said three.
Well, I think.
To the best of my knowledge, it's two plus the businesses.
Now, that's on lots, so I know there's other things.
Well, part of it is.
There's certainly others that are not two and a half.
It could be going over your neighbors.
That are not two and a half acres, they're not conforming.
All be within the town.
That's not the building.
I mean, obviously, within the town.
They can do anything to the building on that lot, if we know where the town is.
Yeah, but.
And they could make that three times.
I just can't support it until we know where our town is. Yeah.
I'm okay with striking it, though, I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything worth hardly thinking about, it applies to so few. So.
See, I have a question, Simeon.
Yes, sir.
Jonathan, on the stable private under businesses, does this mean that someone can't come in and have a stable of horses to rent out? Is that what that implies? This special use permit, which I'm not sure what that is.
They would have to go before the council and request it.
Can you speak louder, Simeon?
Oh, my bad. They would need to go before the council? That's what a special use permit is? I don't really remember why stables has an S in business. I guess to prevent any giant horse breeding rental area. I don't know if anyone cares about that, I.
But for a lot of us, it's kind of intermingled with the other three categories. I mean, I have, my horses were breeding, and I could be considered a stable, and yet we would be under the, we had five acres.
But aren't you?
You're not in the business.
You're not in business district, you're in residential.
We were, we did have a business.
You're not in a business district, you're not zoned business.
It's only like if, if the yellow, they tried to do that in the yellow, they'd have to come.
I see, so if you're going to a business district, and you want to have a business, I see, okay.
Or if you come before the council and want the council to rezone something to business.
Okay, I understand.
And there's a lot to that, so if it's going to be stinky, then we need to be considerate of the neighbors a little bit. But, you know, if you have 20 acres, it doesn't matter, so. All right, so, anything on eight?
Well, just to clarify, I think there was a little confusion. That whole thing about the stable is only talking about the yellow parts of the map. Anyone on any of the other parts can build as many stables, biggest stables, as they want to. Just for the, the business district is what we were discussing.
Okay, number nine, number 10? He's a lot diggy with the definitions.
Page 10.
Page 10.
We're on page 10. Okay. We're. Okay, so, on number nine, I think they don't have any problem with that, so.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about.
Okay. Okay, we're on page nine, and we're flipping over to page 10 for the council. Again, if, if any citizen has, is signed up, and they can have, they have up to three minutes to speak regarding any of this, but we want to kind of go over it with council first. Anything on page 11?
So, Simeon, can you, one more time, explain the mother track thing? I mean, I kind of get it, but I kind of don't, but we, we have a lot of ETJ around our town, and a lot of people, like you say, their front yard is in the town and their backyard isn't, but.
Right.
If they wanted to build another house, for example, that would be limited because of the size of the part that's in the town, if they have enough back in the ETJ, can they build as many structures as they want? Or where's the measuring stick going to go? Is it going to go on the town portion, or on the entire portion?
It's going to go on the entire portion. That's why we put the mother track, because it wouldn't be fair to the people that own a lot of land to be restricted as though the only thing that owned was in the town.
I don't think you understand his question.
He's. Outside the town, they could build it however they want to.
That is certainly true.
Yeah, it's, it was just purpose of, if everything was zoned by just the property within the city limits, everybody would have one to two acre lots based on the frontage that's on the road. There would be no distinction. By giving people with larger plots greater freedom, by including the way they man, or if they have multiple properties, by grouping them under one owner, they have more.
Well, the reason I ask is I have people that have called me that have a home currently in the ETJ portion of their land, and they want to build an additional home that will likely fall up into the town part of their land. Are we going to say they've got too many houses on the property? But they have more than enough land to warrant lots of houses, it's just one's going to be up in the town portion, one's going to be hundreds of feet back in the ETJ portion.
Completely fine. I mean, if they have 10 acres, they could put four houses right into the town. I mean, I hope they don't do that, but.
Right, on the setbacks and things.
Yeah, then be right up next to the road, yeah.
So, on page 11, the only definition I wanted to address is driveway. Obviously, it's pretty simple to describe a driveway, but I guess my concern, when we go to section 18, we're going to talk about this quite a bit, I think. In, in section 18, it, in my opinion, it attempts to define a driveway again by calling it water permeable, no asphalt, no concrete. So, I don't know if, if we just want to change the language in 18 that says this driveway, this additional driveway can only be non-permeable, or, or what Berman thought, if this is, if this is defining it in another section. So.
Well, on the agrarian, when specified it.
18.2.1.2.
Okay, it just left that out. It doesn't give the, the type of material on the definition.
Well, not on the definition, huh?
But in the section.
But in the section, it attempts to define as the surface of the driveway must be water permeable, no asphalt or concrete.
For agrarian.
Okay, but if we're using driveway that's already defined, now we're, now we're also defining the driveway's material. defining the driveway's material.
I see what you mean. Would it fix it? I, I noticed this, too. I was just copying over something that was discussed and given, so I was trying to be really, I wasn't trying to change anything when I put it into this document, but that we need another definition for agrarian driveway that's provided in eighteen point two point one point two. Otherwise, it's kind of confusing.
Okay, we, we can do that when we get there, then. I don't want to slow us down anymore.
And on that point, do we want to have, because some, if someone has two hundred acres, for instance, they're going to have more than one agrarian driveway. You're going to have several gates and everything, so how can we amend that?
We'll get that to section eighteen, though.
Okay, we'll get that to eighteen, okay. Just, it's coming. All right, page eleven. And some of this we've been over, so, for months, so we're just looking for anything else. Okay, page twelve.
The stables, the private, I think that one's going to be kind of back to where we was talking about those buildings earlier, and, and now we're setting a distance on, on those buildings. So some of the outbuildings are going to be regulated differently, and I get it smell or whatever, but when we was talking about this loose interpretation of how many buildings can be on your property, well, it's obviously going to be regulated on the distance on the stable. So I didn't know if council wanted to make that number match the numbers that we're going to talk about in district regulations later, or if the council feels that this is adequate.
I don't have strong feelings. This has been reduced several times. I hardly think an additional setback's really needed. I get that it's courteous, but I'd be okay with striking it.
I think you're going to have more nonconforming with that.
Well, yeah, because I, I venture to say we have an upper of barns and things in town that are noncompliant, I mean, that are right on the fence.
Is that right?
And I, I think especially if you have smaller acreage, you just don't have a lot of room, and you're trying to cram your shop and your house and your whatever, and, and again, it, maybe it's rude. I guess it's rude if your neighbor's property is small, too.
Right.
And you're right up against their swimming pool or something, but.
Well, only if you're not taking care of your stable anyways, it don't have to stink.
Well, or if it's a shop and you like the Blair music, or.
Well, I mean, shops are okay, this is just for stables.
Then we strike it.
I'm okay with striking it.
Now, the, do we still need the definition and just free it up to make it, or maybe it should be five, you know, minimum?
It can match the, the other setbacks.
Because we have the right, or the side setback at five foot, so you're not right on the property line, because lots of disputes happen if things are right on the line.
And I'm not sure I'm happy with that.
We could just make it say an accessory building used for quartering horses. Strike the rest.
Okay.
Say that again?
An accessory building used for quartering horses.
Yeah, just eliminate the setback.
Okay.
So does that include sheep, lambs, goats, cows? How are those structures going to be defined? Are they not needed because they're not stable?
Well, they're not defined, really.
Okay, fair enough.
That's a good point. I guess it doesn't matter, it's going to be allowed if it's not on there.
Okay, anything else?
Pictures stinky.
Not Simeon's.
Okay, page thirteen.
Okay, so here again, Simeon, can you explain eighteen? I mean, I, I looked at your forum posting where you described how you guys got together, but what, how does this restrict development? Because I think that was the intention, right? Somehow by managing driveways, we can stop development.
Hopefully, I'll say, I can't take credit for this section, but I can tell you its main purpose, and to me, the biggest thing in here is making sure that the driveways don't exceed fifteen feet, and the reason for that is that those big developments that are probably going to try to put something in their ETJ where a zoning can't help are going to need a huge access road, and they're going to want to put this giant road going back to their huge subdivision that's outside of the town, and this would kind of act as a gatekeeping mechanism and just be another dissuading reason from subdividing a giant piece of land that has access in by a poetry road.
So some.
So Poetry Ranch, I don't know that they're in our town limit, but that would be in violation, because they have a pretty large entrance.
Do they have, is like actual width of the road very wide, or just the entrance portion?
But you have a hundred and fifty percent.
Really?
It's a road.
So, but they're outside, they're, they're way outside.
I'm just thinking as a view.
You just couldn't even make it.
So what if someone in an agrarian use had, had, say they had seventeen feet, then they're just nonconforming?
Well, yeah, I mean, I can tell you.
Their driveway would be.
My gates, I put sixteen foot gates everywhere to get tractors and valuers and things through, so I can guarantee you my gate is, my driveway's more than sixteen feet, because my gate is sixteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think we want to.
Mine.
Is it, is it, is it that width all the way down the drive? Oh, okay.
Mine's kind of pushing the limits, too, because mine goes to two houses, my neighbors included, so.
If a lot of gates are sixteen foot, why don't we just say sixteen foot? That's kind of a real standard.
Well, sixteen is sixteen foot. I mean, doesn't it, isn't it sixteen? Did they get there on?
But is yours?
The same thing.
Oh, the gates within the front, first sixty feet of the, any gate that's over sixteen, is that within the first sixty feet of the road?
Yes, it is.
Where we allow for more width there.
And then, well, my apron is larger, too, because I'm turning off a small county road with a forty foot hay trailer and a twenty-five point truck.
Well, yeah, there's a.
I'm the one that made it this big, is it not big enough?
You've got an apron laying there, too.
Yeah, because, yeah, because of the turning thing.
Well, then we need to change, because that's what was, that was my argument.
And I, and I understand that it's fifteen feet, but as a.
That should be changed to at least sixteen, if we keep it.
Oh, no, it needed, well, all it could go is about what I can do at my driveway.
So, so it seems like, in my opinion, Tara, if you want to, since section eighteen is all new to most of the council, can we go by them one by one? Because additional driveways has already gotten skipped over, and I think it needs to be addressed.
Okay, so drive, section eighteen, driveways and access, eighteen point one, the purpose, the purpose of this section is to regulate the location, design, and construction of driveways within the town of Poetry, ensuring safe and efficient access to properties while preserving the character of different zoning districts. Eighteen point two, applicability. The section applies to all properties within the jurisdiction of the town of Poetry categorized under the following zoning districts. Eighteen point two point one, agrarian. Eighteen point two point one point one, one driveway, or private road per residence.
Did you say we were going to like slash dwelling?
What I was suggesting is everywhere where it says residence, I would change that to dwelling unit, like we have throughout the rest of the document. I think it's been confusing for people whenever they say one driveway per residence. It really should be one driveway per house, and we describe that by a dwelling unit throughout the document, so.
Do you see any problem with that, Mr. Berman?
Chuck, can you repeat that?
So in eighteen point two point one point one, it says one driveway or private road per residence. We're, we're thinking that it needs to be, since our definition is dwelling unit for a house, that we should keep it consistent and put dwelling unit instead of per residence, put per dwelling unit?
Yeah, I, I think the two terms are interchangeable.
Okay. So if we do residence slash dwelling unit, that would be.
We could just do dwelling unit.
I think that'd be clear.
Okay. All right. Eighteen point two point one point two, additional driveways for agrarian use are permitted, provided they are no closer than five hundred feet of road to any existing agrarian, nonresidential driveways. The surface of the driveway must be water permeable, i.e. no asphalt or concrete.
So what, so what does that mean, Simeon?
So the idea behind this was to allow all of the farmers or people like me that have gravel road or crushed rocks or other things like that to have additional driveways, because lots of people have access to their fields through gates, and while we don't want developments to come in and put a thousand driveways, you know, we want to take care of our farmers, so we put in an additional definition so that we could allow those, and we might want to allow more than one per property.
But does this mean my gates have to be at least five hundred feet apart? I can't.
No, we're talking about a driveway. Do you have a drive at every gate, or do you just go through the ditch?
I mean, you.
Well, I have, yeah, crushed rock into multiple entrances, but they're probably five hundred feet apart. I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah.
That was the idea. I am totally open to changing that, of course.
So the belief being that a development's going to poke lots of roads in, and you don't want them to be real close together.
A bunch of sixteen foot ones.
Right. So the way to get around the big, wide, you know, road would be a development putting in multiple or an entrance and an exit, or something like that.
So I know that we have quite a few agrarian roads, but I think all of them are five hundred feet apart or more. All right, so eighteen point two point one point three, driveways for agrarian use are defined as those connections to roads or residential driveways which allow for accessing the nonresidential portion of a property where activities are conducted relating to or in support of farming, ranching, forestry, and/or other agriculture endeavors. Again, it's, it's meant to try and help us avoid high-density development in the back of the properties. All right, eighteen point two point two, single-family estate zone, SFE, one driveway or private road per residence. I think we were going to slash residence and put dwelling unit. That seems to be the consensus.
Uh-huh.
And then eighteen point two point two point two, one driveway for agrarian use. Now, that's single-family estate, because that's pretty small. I would like to know if there's any citizen that has a single-family estate that has more than one driveway that's paved and one more than one agrarian that's not paved, because that would be pretty hard to find, I think. All right, single-family zone, one driveway or private road per, again, dwelling unit is what we're going to do. And then business zone, eighteen point two point four, there are no requirements for driveway spacing on businesses.
Okay, I, I want to talk about that one. Why would we not want to limit our driveway space when we're talking about trying to restrict maybe these monster big boxes coming in?
Well, one, they would have to have property that's zoned business if, if they buy that, which is not likely.
I mean. The biggest yellow portion over there's got a ton of road frontage.
I'm just going to leave it on that, Terry, because I was kind of wondering that, too.
But it, it's also on fifteen sixty-five.
The reasoning behind that is that there are a few businesses in town, well, really, every business in town doesn't conform with what we have in other sections here. So for example, Poetry Postal, we just wanted to make sure nobody turned nonconforming, because if Poetry Postal wants to expand their driveway or their parking lot, we didn't want to stop them. It does allow for other businesses to get in easier, so there is a pretty serious drawback with that, but I think we were just erring on the side of liberty.
But we have to approve that business first.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it'd be a nonconforming use of the property. So how are we going to tear up that driveway that they couldn't ever put it back? I mean, because I, I pulled up a map a while ago when y'all was talking about residential driveways. It doesn't make me any difference, because it's not going to change anything, how they do business, according to Mr. Berman, because it's the use of it, but there was four driveways and seven hundred feet on one property. So what's the difference on regulating these businesses? Because now we're trying to stop what's coming in, guys.
Right.
It's not stopping anything that's here. Portia Plaza has no less than eight entrances.
Nine entrances.
Nine, if you count the easement on Longhorn.
I guess that's.
So we're trying to regulate what's coming. What we have's not going to change.
I guess unless a business wanted to expand their driveway.
Well, and I would like to see it thirty foot wide with thirty foot radiuses. We do work on text out on state highways all the time, and they're typically thirty feet wide with thirty foot radiuses. Text dot thinks that's a good turn lane, we should have.
Well, and I think, I think the fire code, if for a new business, they have to have it for fire code, like a, they have to have a.
We don't have an adopted fire code. I guess it would go back to the county.
Well, that's true. Well, the county would inspect, maybe.
But I would, I would like to see some restrictions there. We're not, we're not hurting anybody that's here. We're looking at what, what the future looks like for, for everything.
What, what's the number, then?
People can ask for variances, that's something you didn't go over and none of this council has either. So if we restrict it to one, they can come in here with a variance and show proof why they would need a second entrance.
Avariance would require proof of an unnecessary hardship based on special conditions associated with the real estate, but the council would sit as a board of adjustment. The requirements are a little bit more heightened, it's not the same thing as an SUP. The applicant would have to show that there is some hardship associated with the configuration of the property, not just because it's more convenient to have multiple driveways.
Right.
And yet, I all understand, I didn't say this before, but there's a difference between a drive entrance and a driveway.
Sure. Entrances are, are entering to the town roads or, or state roads.
So a business who needs a fire lane, a lot of times they, they need the entrance, like depending on how deep it goes, they would need, you're saying thirty, you want thirty foot wide and, and then, but they need, maybe they could have a circular drive, I guess, to meet fire code.
Yeah, that's different. We're just strictly talking about entrances, traffic ingress, ingress, egress to our road system. And I would propose that we limit it to one entrance that's thirty foot wide with thirty foot radiuses on the approach.
So, Terry, to jump on something you said earlier, you're talking about the largest yellow piece. I was just checking with Simeon here. So that large yellow piece is a sand pit, isn't it?
It is.
So that's not even subject.
I don't know what they can build there.
It's all ETJ, so.
It's not really subject.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's not subject to it, so I don't know, I mean, that's kind of a pipe dream, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, because we don't have any.
Same.
Sitting sand pit can do what it wants, it's ETJ and.
Oh, yes, I, I saw the owner in the back, and to alleviate that fear, we have no control over it. There's a tiny, tiny little corner that's in the town, so we had to paint it a color, but there's no regulations there.
It's actually three little tiny pieces.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, three little tiny pieces.
It's not anything.
Well, just so people don't think there's some huge area there that's going to develop into a shopping mall.
Yeah, I didn't mean that. I'm just saying, what's here is protected. If we're talking about future impacts on our town.
No, I agree.
That's a tool, that's a tool that we can utilize.
So you're proposing that eighteen point two point four point one says one entrance for a business thirty foot wide by thirty foot radius.
With thirty foot radiuses on approach.
On approach, okay. Any other council?
Well, and to your point, that would be good practice, Terry, because as we do grow and develop, you need to be able to get in large fire trucks and other things, so even though we don't have that requirement now, people don't want to be wrecking concrete ten years from now to comply.
I know on.
Free up.
Over the thunder. So on, when there's big, okay, can't hear.
Bob, can you turn us up to five?
Bob, are you able to turn us up, or no? Is that loud? Okay. So I know I have driveways that are fifty-foot wide in my, in my, they were there, of course, when I bought the place, so is thirty-foot adequate?
Well, if they come to us and say, "I can't get in my driveway with this type of truck."
I mean, some of these truck drivers, they miss it anyway.
We could give them a variance at that point, though. That would be an undue hardship. There's only whatever undue hardship.
So like, you know, a feed truck that's coming in, man, sometimes they plow into my field, you know, because they can't do it, so, alright. Alright, so anything else on page fourteen?
We're changing the maximum width sixteen, right? On eighteen point three, point one, point one?
We're not, okay, eighteen point, we're not there yet. Okay, residential driveways-
Eighteen point three, point one, point one?
Oh, sixteen, yeah, sixteen.
Eighteen.
That's misnumbered.
Eighteen point two, point five, residential driveways, maximum width, eighteen point three, point one, point one, residential driveway shall not exceed a maximum of fifteen feet in width. He's proposing we change that to sixteen because most-
Yeah, we have a numbering problem there, too. We go from eighteen five one to eighteen three.
Well, eighteen five one should be eighteen point two, point five, point one.
Right.
Right.
And then the following-
So a two got left out, okay.
So let's fix the maximum width numbering in the driveway definition.
Okay, and then-
And then it should be eighteen point five, point one, point two.
Do you guys want to say sixteen feet wide?
Sixteen.
I think that's what you said, Mr. Jeffy, right?
Well, again, mine is at least sixteen. I don't know. I think what constitutes a double driveway, to me, it's going to be thirty or forty feet. It's not going to be sixteen or twenty or, I think you could go to twenty. You can't really pass two cars very well on a twenty-foot driveway, so I think you could put it up to eighteen or something.
I'd like twenty. My drop, my gate's twenty feet wide.
Yeah.
To your point, we can't pass two cars on twenty feet.
Yeah, you can't. So I think twenty is still safe. That's not going to be-
I don't have a problem with that. That's good by me.
Alright, so on that, we want to go up to twenty, okay? So citizens, recognize that, please. So if you're complaining about the fifteen, we're changing, amending that, okay? Eighteen point two, point six, shared access, driveway shared between two or more adjoining lots or parcels must conform to the same standards as driveways that are not shared. Okay, eighteen point two, point seven, circular driveways, eighteen point seven, point one, circular driveways defined as driveways serving one residence and entering and exiting the same roadway are allowed and considered as one driveway. Eighteen point seven, point two, circular driveways must conform to all of their specifications and its ordinance. Eighteen point two, point eight, distance limitation, eighteen point two, point eight, point one, the paved portion of the residential driveways may connect the residence to a public or private street but shall not extend further than fifty feet beyond the residence it serves unless the driveway transforms and continues as an agrarian driveway. Eighteen point two, point nine, driveway apron, the maximum width there, the apron, the flared portion of the driveway interfacing with the roadway may be up to fifty feet wide, and you're saying that that's not wide enough?
He needs it bigger.
What is a good number?
I'd have to measure mine. We have, that's the difference, and that's the beauty of our town, is we have different roads. I have an extremely narrow county road, so mine is extremely wide to get in there to make that turn.
There might be a citizen that has input on that. Eighteen point two, point nine?
Well, you want to edit that? Because I'm in favor of editing the flare. That's not going to help out big business if-
Well, I want to go back. Can we go, I didn't, I missed it. I want to talk about the not extending fifty feet beyond the residence it serves, because we do have outbuildings, we do have shops, cottage businesses that are in the back. If, I feel like if they want to put a driveway all the way back there that's concrete, I don't think we should regulate that. Circle drive takes up a lot of concrete. We're not regulating a circle drive, so if they want to extend straight past their house, I would like to see that just stricken.
So the reason that that was there, I think, was, again, to try and prohibit housing developed beyond the residence. So then it transforms and continues as an agrarian drive. Of course, anyone who has something now, it's all grandfather caused in anyway, so it wouldn't really affect our current citizens.
But I'm okay with changing that. It was to close up a loophole that developers could do, where they could just have the driveway past a pre-existing house. But if you're wanting to change that-
It's not in the town. You might want concrete all the way back there.
See, I think that that's kind of a powerful tool for new things.
It is, it is.
And I don't want to get rid of any of the tools that we have to keep high-density housing out if we can all fall somewhere. Because it, again, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not going to hurt our current citizens at all.
Yeah, but future uses, I mean, if I've got a $150,000 Skeeter boat, I might want to drive it down a concrete driveway and back it in my shop. I don't want to start restricting that. If we're stopping the high-density housing in the back, say, three hundred and eleven feet, say, three hundred and ten feet, make them have a one-foot gap. I don't think that's-
Really restrict.
Well, I mean-
So what if we just said a hundred feet beyond? But what if their home is, you know, two hundred feet back and then, you know?
I mean, it's-
Well, if it's two hundred feet back, we can't regulate it anyway.
Every loophole that we try to close might make it a little harder for residents, maybe, so that's why I'd lean towards striking it out of there if need be.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll listen to some citizens on that. Alright.
If we're taking votes now, my vote up here is, we strike it, Simeon, I agree.
A second.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's three people there, at least. Strike it, strike it.
Are you, are you one, is it consistent?
I don't care. Actually, I don't like any of eighteen. I don't see why we need it. Why do we need it?
Vote taken.
Alright. Alright, so the apron, the flared portion of the driveway interfacing with the roadway may be up to fifty feet wide as measured at the point of the interface. Eighteen point two, point nine, point one, the flare must decrease the maximum allowable width of the driveway's achieved at a distance of no greater than sixty feet from the interface of the driveway and the road.
And you want to discuss that later, which I don't have a problem with.
Yeah.
Alright, section, I guess the rest of this is stuff that's been in there. That section was new, so is anything on page fifteen?
What about the penalty for violations?
So we won't be enforcing those or determining those. To the best of my understanding, that is going to be a judge, and I think that's the legally maximum amount. I don't think that's our number. Maybe Mr. Berman can correct me on that.
Maximum amount allowed by law.
That's weird.
We can't go higher than that. It doesn't mean that that's what the fine is going to be in any case. That just means that's the absolute maximum that it can go.
So what is the scenario by which someone would be fined? I mean, they've snuck a house in overnight or, I mean, I don't know. Trying to imagine how that would even happen.
They do anything in violation of our zoning regulations. Every day that they're in violation is a separate violation or separate case.
Can you put, I'm having trouble hearing, sir.
No, it's the noise from the rain. If we had a municipal court, we would write tickets or we would file citizen-initiated complaints. In the absence of a municipal court, we could file complaints if the JP Court would take it with the local justice court. But the prosecution is a criminal prosecution where the punishment is by fine alone and cannot exceed $2,000. That does not preclude the fact that violations of our zoning regulations are also, can be enforced through civil means. In other words, a lawsuit for injunctive relief to restrain the violation.
Again, I'm just trying to imagine. I mean, I guess we're not out patrolling the town daily looking for infractions, but I'm just, I guess if somebody puts in a driveway and it's too close to the other driveway-
Well, and see, I'm less worried about those. I think we'll know if a McDonald's starts building, you know?
Well, yeah, I'm just-
I mean, those are the big things to me, is the developments and big business and all that.
Come on, our citizens, it's to, again-
I'm not going to be patrolling.
Yeah, I don't know. It's just, it's, yeah. As long as we don't get caught in the net, I think that's okay, but if one of us gets caught in the net, not the council, but one of us citizens, that's going to be painful.
Well, it says up to. That doesn't mean it has to be that. It's just, that's up to. It doesn't have to.
Yeah, Mike, you understand that. I mean, if a ticket was issued because somebody, I don't know, built a house within setback requirements, then we made them move it back, but we wrote them a ticket to compel them to do that, then that doesn't mean that when they're prosecuted, the fine is going to be $2,000. It could be a hundred bucks, it could be fifty bucks. It's anything below $2,000.
But it's $2,000 per day.
So if, okay-
It's per day if we write one ticket every single day. Rule of thumb is if you write a ticket every single day and you show up in court as the prosecutor, you're the bad guy because you're clearly harassing somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just one ticket.
Yeah, you don't write a hundred tickets because-
So what do you see? I think we're not used to seeing this, so, I mean, some people maybe-
Generally, what I have done in the past is when code enforcement has a serious violation, I'll give them instructions to issue citations, one a day for no more than five days. So they'll have a total of five tickets. That impresses upon the property owner that needs to come into compliance, but when it actually comes into court, it is extremely unusual for a judge or jury to assess the maximum fine. That happens in serious cases where the violator really deserves it. It gives the prosecutor leeway to negotiate downward itself. Fine of a hundred bucks per case is not inappropriate for a first violation, or fifty bucks if it's cured by the time it comes to court. And the goal is to seek compliance, not to punish people.
Well, I'm just thinking about, we have said, not me specifically, but we, the town, have said to trash violators, for example, that every day that your dumpster is out there, we're going to charge you $500 or whatever, so that sort of implies-
That we could, yeah, that we could.
We're going to write them a ticket a day, I guess.
The concept is the same. Even in those circumstances, we would not write one ticket a day for a year. It would be enough citations to get the property owner's attention and to induce compliance, and the fine amounts aren't to punish them. The fine amount is to induce compliance, and so if they comply, then the fines aren't going to be $500 a day.
Alright, so section twenty-one, validity severance and conflict, any of- Now, there were numbers, there were some number changes here. So business was changed on B1 to twenty feet.
That was changed on-
And then the forty feet.
That was changed on nine thirteen.
Okay. And then the sides, side yard setback seemed too strict. It make a lot of places non-conforming, so in order to make that more freeing for folks, it was set at five. Our attorney said, you know, you don't want to make it, we were going to strike it out altogether, I think, is put zero.
I wanted it zero.
But then, if you've got someone building on a lot line, that could create conflict with the neighbors, and so five just seemed like a very liberal, you know, most people are going to put something back more than five feet, but that's the side and the rear yard setback, and then the front, of course, is seventy-five feet, and then for business, fifty-five feet from the center of the road, the front road.
So I printed off all the zonings that we had on the forum, and I dated this, and I'll go through it with y'all just to make sure that council's up to date. Seven six, seven sixteen didn't change. On nine thirteen, I seen what appears to me, council started making changes to be less of an impact on the neighboring property. We decreased the height of the businesses because we didn't want it to affect other properties, and we started on that date, on September, we started increasing side yard setbacks, minimum rear yard setbacks, minimum lot sizes, and all this was in intent to be less effect, effects on the neighbor. Two eight, just a month ago, we made more increases, so it seems that the council, again, thought that we needed to increase the front yard setback. And then on two twenty-seven, we made another increase on the ag size. On two twenty-seven, I emailed Simeon. On two twenty-nine, I emailed Simeon and asked him if I could share this document with those who didn't have access. I had people wanting me to print it, give them to them. Simeon said, "Yeah, give it to me as people as you can." And then two weeks later, we've got another one that goes against what I believe council had attempted to do, and we've set them at five now.
Oh, that's my, that's me.
So, so-
Well, I didn't want anybody to be non-conforming. That was the intent.
So you really restrict people and make them non-conforming if you have a-
Your accessory buildings-
Side setbacks were set at thirty-five feet.
But is your issue, Terry, is your issue the number or is your issue the process?
Well, I think the process proves what the council was wanting. We just want to be less effect, have less effects on our neighbors, and now we've just gone totally opposite on this document.
No, it actually does less effects.
Well, let me speak to that a little bit. Mr. Terry's right. In the past, we had continued to increase it because we didn't want to be like Caddo Mills. We did not want to have properties right up against the road. But myself and Mr. Blake did some looking into it, and there would have been a lot of non-conforming houses with the 110-foot setback, so we were just proposing that we reduce that because it will allow more development, but it will allow greater liberty to our citizens, and there's a decent amount affected, so there are pros and cons, but I'm going to lean towards helping our neighbors out, and that was just my stance.
Remember the council decided to have council member Simeon and council member Jonathan get together and really iron this all out. So that was a charge. They were charged to do that, and so that's what they've done. They said they want to be less restrictive and allow, you know, not, for town hall, for instance, so back when it was thirty-five foot, we put town hall way back on, you know, from the road to try and meet what we thought might be as a requirement, and then it was thirty-five feet from the side. Well, because it was thirty-five feet, it required more cost. I mean, there was more concrete cost. Thank goodness we had a generous Leland who helped donate some of that, but if you didn't have that money, it would be out of your pocket. So I'm just saying, you know, if it's five foot from the side, that would be less cost to our citizens, so.
I'd like to explain my intent when I went through this. When they adopted the comprehensive plan, and since I wasn't part of the process, I joined this later, this became, the mission statement became my guideline, and I felt like we couldn't affect our current residents based on what might happen in the future, because what we did with this would affect them immediately, and I didn't want anybody to have a non-conforming structure on their property, regardless if they could rebuild it, but I just, I didn't want them to have that. So I kind of pushed to have that reduced so that you wouldn't be grandfathered in. I don't want you grandfathered in. I like you just the way you are.
So is this another one that somebody can give me a number of how many houses will be non-conforming, or is this many, again? Are we going to use the word many?
I only have any little evidence of driving by and looking at accessory buildings, not necessarily houses, but accessory buildings, you know, the little shed and stuff, you know, that's why I was wanting less than five, because they're a small property, they push it to the edge, and I want them to be able to have it the way they have it.
I, so your accessory building makes perfect sense, and-
And again, we're talking about moving forward. Do you want a twenty-foot tall business five feet up your property line? Well, one, it could happen. Someone could petition that, but there are residential SFEs that touch businesses right now, business districts. They don't want a twenty-foot tall business right beside their house, five foot off their fence.
I don't, I don't want to-
I'm not going to speak for them.
I don't want anybody's accessory building. Nothing has to change about those, and they can rebuild it back in the same place if it's, but it's still in it. It's still, because when it's legally non-conforming, it can incur property where they- This is, this is part of the hard thing, because when they go, when the purchaser goes to get title insurance on it, the guy that assesses the value, even those accessory buildings don't add too much to the whole property, and they have exceptions in title things. It's, and they can get a loan, but it may be higher interest rate, or the title company may say, "Well, we're not going to cover this," and they have to come up with a later down payment.
I don't have all those answers. I talked to two realtors and one title company. I said, "This doesn't come with, if you buy the property, you need to know if it's non-conforming." So I don't see how this hinders the sale.
Well, only in the sense that they might have to get a loan that has a higher interest rate because they have an exception.
Thanks to, thanks to-
I don't think, I don't think you can hear you. I'm having trouble working here.
These are accessory buildings. This is a business. Okay, but can we change the business?
We have a debate going on here about the side setbacks of five foot on commercial, I think, and then five foot in the back in the rear, so I'd like to hear from our citizens. Is page seventeen finally there? Page seventeen? Alright, notes to appendix one. Are there any comments on notes to appendix one?
Terry, just quickly, back to sixteen. So on the table of setbacks, every one of these is from the property boundary except for the front setback, which is the center of the road.
That's right.
So to me, we might want to add a little something in that block just to let them know. They don't need to build seventy-five feet back on their property line. They need to build seventy-five feet back from the center of the road, which allows them to move closer.
That's, that's true. It's in the notes, but it might be handy to have it in the table.
Yeah, I just want to put it in parentheses. Yeah, I put it in parentheses underneath, just on the center line of the road.
Alright.
Everything else is based on my survey, but they are not.
Okay, is there anything else, Mike? Okay. Alright, seventeen? Okay, so on number D, that's gotten some attention. The rear yard setback or depth is defined as the distance from the boundary of a lot that is most distant from or is most nearly parallel to the front lot line and the front near or side of any structure. The side yard setback or depth is the distance between the front, rear, or side of any structure and any lot line that is not from the front or rear lot line eaves, and roof extensions or a porch without post or column may project into the required rear or side yard for a distance not to exceed eight feet and subsurface structures. So I think there's been some talk about that, so are we, does this regulate our porches? Does this regulate our porches?
I can't hear a word you're saying.
I can't either.
And I've been trying.
Can we increase the, we can't increase the volume at all?
I know, she's reading little D.
I know, I got that one. Repeat your question, I'll listen carefully.
Repeat it.
Okay, so it's on the paper. I'm just reading, uh, appendix D. When it says about the porch not to exceed eight feet and subsurface structures, so when we're measuring the, the setbacks, um, it's just saying that the, the distance is from the porch, or is it saying it's from the structure? Will you explain that, Simeon?
It's gonna be from the face of the building. You, you measure your distance from the face of the building. Porches and structures can encroach within the setback, within these ranges.
It gives more freedom to people that have big overhang next to the side of the property. It allows that overhang to go into the setback a little bit, if I'm reading this right.
Okay, so you're saying, so we have a five-foot side setback, then if they have an eight-foot porch, the eight-foot porch can go into that, across the line?
Well, not, not by federal law.
Okay, so what, and you're saying on a front setback, if they have an eight-foot porch, then that's, can go into that seventy-five foot measure, is that right?
Yes.
So if we don't have porches at all listed there, what is, can we just do that? And, or is it unclear, it makes it unclear?
So, um, the people that I thought were nonconforming might not be nonconforming, 'cause I was counting their porches, but it, those porches may not even count.
So if you just struck the whole thing with the porches, how would that affect it?
It would take away a little freedom.
It would take away their freedom? How so?
I think so, because it says, "Eaves and roofs, extensions or porches without post or column may project, may project into the required front yard for a distance not to exceed eight feet."
Oh, so, so you're saying that they have a seventy-five foot setback, the porch can encroach eight, up to eight feet. That isn't saying that they can only have an eight-foot porch, it means four foot would have to be back.
Right, the porch gets extra permission. In fact, I'd forgotten about that when measuring. The two homes that I was thinking about might not be nonconforming at all, because it's the porches, so pushing it into the town.
So, we're giving, we're giving an excuse, an exemption, so to speak, by having the porch, but it doesn't mean you can't just have an eight-foot porch, it just means only eight foot can extend into that seventy-five foot setback.
Right, at least eight foot can break the rules.
If you have a twenty-foot porch on a new house, you're good, it's just only eight foot of it can be into that eight, eight, seventy-five foot front setback. Is that correct?
Right, we're giving the porch more freedom, not less.
So it actually gives you more freedom, not less, okay. All right.
Yeah, there are no porch size requirements, so you could have your porch on.
Have a twenty-five foot porch.
Well, but it can't have posts, so it's gonna be an exposed porch, which is unlikely to be.
Okay, now, I think that our storm is gonna let, okay, anything else? Okay, so we're gonna take a, a short break, it's been a long time. So the time right now is nine twenty-eight, we're taking a five-minute recess. Okay, I know a lot of you have been waiting a long time to be able to speak, so now we're beginning the, the public portion of the public hearing. So Secretary Ann is going to, um, announce your names, so the first five, please be ready, and the second five after that, be ready, please. We're, we're, we're called to order here. All right, Secretary Ann, first person. Darrell Watson, okay? You have up to three minutes.
Testing, 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 there we go, okay. My name is Darrell Watson, I live at sixty-four twenty-three Green Meadow Lane.
Okay, we need order in the, in the chambers, please. Excuse me, ma'am, I'm, ma'am, we have, ma'am, I'm sorry, but you're being disruptive, he's trying to speak.
Well, can you go outside? We can't hear him, thank you.
Moira Paula and I have reviewed the proposed zoning ordinance, and we support it implicitly. We enjoyed the whole idea of preserving tranquility as much as possible. The changes that have come to the community since we became landowners in two thousand and six have been slow, in contrast to the type of growth we have seen in Terrell and the cities along High Thirty to our north. Developers are not interested in limiting growth. They are looking to take anything that they can capitalize on, whether it be zero lot line developers who want to bring in HUD Section Eight housing, or transform farmland into crowded mobile home parks. Of course, the developers are in it to make a quick buck, just like some who would try to use their position as a landowner, or even a town council member, to cash in on some very profitable real estate deals. What I want to offer is a concern that is far-reaching and could really hit close to home for all of us. The border crisis is what I'm referring to. Some may still believe such an issue will, quote, "never impact us," since we are not in the middle of a big city. Well, let me say this.
Can you please stay on point? Thank you, a map and ordinance, sir, thank you.
We're gonna throw the welcome mat right out there in front of them if we don't do I could throw statistics at you all day long, what crime rates are in the big cities, and what's happening because of the border issue. There is nothing in this zoning ordinance that removes grandfather's rights from anyone. The town would, in my understanding, consider the future interest of a business or an individual who is seeking a zoning change to obtain zoning revisions to this amazingly simple yet effective proposed zoning ordinance. Even the town of Union Valley has zoning ordinances for the same reasons, and that town is populated with three hundred and seven people from the last census.
Thank you, Darrell. Next, we have Jack Mullins.
This has been as energetic as a good church board meeting. Regarding the question with agrarian use driveways, I might suggest access roads or access drives for agrarian use. A question, I own property that was surveyed, platted, and filed with the county of Kaufman in nineteen seventy-four for lots of an acre and a half, it was in, uh, consistence with the minimum requirements, will that still be honored and grandfathered in? I'm saying ahead, can I get a...
So remember that we, if you have questions, Ann's going, Secretary Ann's gonna write it down, and, and then we'll try and answer those after, so we don't want to get this ping-pong back and forth, okay?
I'm, I'm not supposed to answer, I shouldn't have even nodded yes. I'll, I'll get to that, though.
Okay, so, so she listed all those.
I, I would encourage the council, I know you've been working on this a long time, and you're ready to get rid of it and put it to rest, I would encourage you not to be in too big of a hurry, there's obviously lots of conflicting opinions and, uh, dissension among the populace in regard to it. I have noticed that, uh, people who moved from the cities to move to the country, one of the first things they start to do is build a city. And, um, it's always been somewhat ironic to me. Good luck to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord. Okay, next, Scott Leahy. Leahy? Did I pronounce your name right? Okay. Okay, when you announce your address, it can just be general, it doesn't have to be the exact address anymore.
Okay, my name is Scott Leahy, I live on County Road two four two six. Um, I do respect all the effort and work that the council has put into preparing this. For the record, I am opposed to the zoning. The basic idea is, I don't like having to ask permission for what I do with my own land. I did move to the country, live in the country, because I don't want to live in HOA, and we're already here talking about expanding the document, we're talking about code enforcement, we're talking about sign ordinance, we haven't even passed the first one, and we're already expanding it in round two. That would be why I'm opposed. However, my talking point should be a concern to everybody, whether you're opposed to zoning or for zoning, and, uh, that would be, section fourteen point two regarding the board of adjustment is absolutely too vague. If we're going to have a board of adjustment, uh, there's, change is inevitable, there's gonna be lots of applications for change, uh, the council may want change, developers may be coming in asking for change, citizen A may want to change, and citizen B may oppose that change. What is the mechanism for handling all of these requests? How are those decisions going to be made? How is conflict resolution going to happen? And there's no method, there's nothing defined for any appeals. If I do not agree with the council, I, I don't think that should be a best and final answer. There should be at least a method of, of appealing, at least one, one cycle. I do not think that this ordinance should be passed without some specificity applied in section fourteen point two regarding these, because this is gonna come up. The ink is not gonna be dry on this past resolution, if it passes, before someone's applying for change. So those procedures need to be explicitly spelled out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Next?
Uh, next is Laura Leahy, and while she's walking to the front, I'm gonna name the next five, is Billy Ray Borland, Robin and Bart Followill, Chris Brown, Haley Dennis, and there should be one more, Dale Bryant.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Hi, Laura Leahy, and I live on County Road twenty-four twenty-six. Um, and I also appreciate all the effort and time you guys have put into this, I understand it, and I think we all talk about wanting the same thing. We all want to keep poetry like it is, we don't want businesses, we don't want developments, all of us agree on that. However, I'm opposed to passing this ordinance tonight for a couple major reasons. The map is one of them, that do we know really specifically who's in the town and who's not? That, that's an issue. I don't like the driveway section, I don't like being told what to do with my own property that we have paid for. And, and the idea of keeping the developers out and keeping businesses out and all of that, you are sacrificing the rights of the property owners to do what they want with their own property. So you can't have both, and I get it, it's a tough thing to try to figure out, how do we keep this beautiful area as it is? But in doing so, a lot of stuff I see in this document, it's restricting my rights as a property owner to do things on my own property, that I have to come hat in hand to this council, or the future council, to ask them permission for a, a change, a special per, uh, the special use permit. The fact, it, it makes me ill to think about the fact that I have to come and ask you guys to, to be able to do something with my property. You know, we have three different pieces of property in poetry, one of them is a thirty-six acre tract, so if I want to do something different, it's agrarian right now, but if I want to bring my parents, because they're elderly, build a house on that section, or if I want to put in a little business, you know, get a little mobile home and run a little hair salon, or something, now I gotta come ask you guys to do that, and are you guys gonna grant that, or you not? I have no idea. So the, the whole idea of, of trying to balance keeping the town as it is with regulations that are always talking about the other guy, but not talking about me, that's tough, and I understand that. But as, as a property owner here, I didn't, we moved out of town, away from HOAs, because we don't want to be regulated, we don't want to ask permission, we don't want to be told what to do with our own place, and zoning ordinances, that's exactly what they're designed to do. So ultimately, I do appreciate your, all of y'all's efforts and everything, but I ask you to please reconsider, is there another way to do this, without regulations, without driveway restrictions, without fence restrictions, transparent fences, not transparent, all the stuff that's in here that has specific and, and very, um, a specific regulation that keeps me from the freedom that I enjoy on my own properties, I would ask you to please not, please not, um...
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Leahy, your time is up.
Please don't pass this tonight.
Okay, next? Okay. Just no whirling? No clapping, please, that's, no clapping, please.
Uh, my name's Billy Borland, I have a property on fifteen sixty-five, uh, I'm opposed to any zoning ordinances. I live next to the largest, uh, business piece on that map, and I would, if you do think about passing it, I would strongly suggest you make large setbacks off the side property lo, side property lines for businesses, minimum fifty foot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Robin Followill?
Yes. Robin Followill, County Road twenty-four hundred. I just want to first say, um, and I know that some of you already know, you know, I am an expert when it comes to code enforcement, I have my options, one and two, I also have my international license to be a property maintenance inspector and zoning inspector for the city I work for. So, I, I work in a city, I deal with all the big hustle and bustle, and I live in the country, 'cause I don't want to deal with that all the time. I can be PO'd at the world, but by the time I get to my driveway and get that half a mile up to the house, it's all gone. So, I'm not really for all the telling me what we can and can't do, um, on our property, um, especially about a, a rock entrance. Uh, my husband spent twenty thousand dollars on our rock entrance, it looks nice, it's not no rinky-dink, nothing, and our half a mile driveway is crushed asphalt, so, uh, and he ain't gonna let nobody tell him what he can and can't do anyways. So, um, the second thing is, I totally agree with the board of adjustments, needs to be not city council, um, that way, conflict of interest and all that, every case that is brought in front of y'all is done fairly, 'cause that's been an issue in the past, not conflict and interest. Appeals definitely need to be put on there, because that is the right, when it comes to the board of adjustments, if they go against something, that person still has the chance to do an appeal. Um, the sign or, uh, if y'all do a sign ordinance, or you're gonna keep the sign part, the biggest thing besides the size, the size of the sign, is the illumination, because, Lord, if you put up that sign and that neighbor's not that far away and that light's blinding them, you've just inconvenienced them with the big old sign, and they can't do nothing about it. My other big thing is, y'all got to hear about the penalties, fees, you don't have a code enforcement officer, you don't have anybody to send citations, you don't have anybody to force citations. Whatever code enforcement officer you do hire will have to be registered or sworn in on all three counties that this city sits in, and they will have to go to those county courts for those citations. It's a lot of work for just my one city, I'm in court twice a week, and how you just talking about you can write them daily trash tickets, I mean, I write a lot of residential trash tickets. It's on how much you want to push the issue, but I will tell you this, it's gonna be real hard, whoever you hire, they don't play politics. Code enforcement officers don't do that. If, for example, if the mayor was in violation of trash, and we sent a notice, and you didn't fix it within the ten days, or on that fourteenth day, you got trash again, it don't matter that you're the mayor, or the mayor's friend. Code enforcement officers don't get to play politics. It is a state license, reinforce it fairly, so that's something else you need to be thinking about pushing when you put penalties, because it goes all across the board, not just one sided the way you want it.
Thank you, next? Chris?
Chris Brown, I live on fifteen sixty-five. I do thank you all for the hard work, I know it's been a long time coming, I just have a few comments. The gate issue is a big gate issue for me, I have a big rock entrance, too. My gate alone is sixteen and a half feet, and so altogether, I'm probably... And so altogether, I'm probably 30 feet at least.
It's hard to hear you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Usually no one says that about me. And we moved out here in 1999 because no one could tell us what to do. I lived in an HOA. I hated it. This week's in too many places, I'm not saying everywhere, of HOA. It's what it feels like. I think it could be less even. I know it's supposed to be really small, but it could be less. I think the, section 14 definitely needs some definition, serious definition, if we're actually going to try to think about somebody making an appeal. I agree. I'm also concerned about the agrarian entrances. I have a pretty large piece of property. I have multiple entrances now. I don't, because my property is crossed by Dry Creek, I can't access much of my property from one place all the time. So I just think there needs to be refinement done here. Not against everything, but I think less is more in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Move this way down. Okay, I'm going to, can y'all hear me? There we go. I'm going to start with section 1.3. You say in there that you have jurisdiction over the ETJ. Why put that in there in the wording at all? If you don't, sure there's a legal reason, but we are a town and we can make our own rules, remember that? We're in... Section seven, the agrarian section here, you say in here that you can do wholesale sales from your property if you are doing that on there. I think that you should also include retail sales. Some people, because you're selling to the consumer, and the true definition of wholesale is selling business to business, some people, you know, have, they sell beef from their properties.
Ma'am, would you mind repeating to me that number for the second, for the one you just finished speaking about?
7.1.
7.1, thank you.
Oh, and in section 7.2.3, you say you're excluding commercial feedlots. You might want to go into some definition on what that truly means because a commercial feedlot to some people is different than somebody else. Okay, on section 8.2, the permitted uses for single-family residential estates, it says building land or premises shall only be used for the following purposes. You know, you did claim earlier about cottage businesses. That's not included in there. And if it's not included, it says only used for, that's very excluding, so you should include that in there. And then also, it excludes, there's nothing in there about farming, ranching, gardening, or any orchards in those areas. So maybe we should change the verbiage on that to make it a little bit more inclusive, and then you don't have to include those things. And the same is for single-family residential and single-family residential estate on both of those sections. It excludes farms, ranches, and et cetera. And then the definition on, in section 15.2, under definitions, farm, ranch, orchard, it says an area of five acres or more. People tend to farm, ranch, and have orchards on less than five acres. So I think that should be a little bit more inclusive there, that it shouldn't be exclusive to five acres in the definition.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Haley.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Dale Bryant.
Great, thank you. Dale Bryant, while he's coming up, the next five would be...
Dale Bryant.
I'm sorry, Bryant, it says that right there, I'm so sorry. Would be Patty Buikema? I hope I didn't say that wrong. Kevin Sinkovich? I hope I didn't say that wrong. Sorry. Doug Kendrick, Tim Smith, and Brian Benson.
If she's called your name, we need you to sit at my deck, please.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, you have the floor, sir. Sorry.
It's primarily from all the discussion about the Stovall survey. Early on last year, I asked for copy...
It's only on the map?
It's about real estate.
No, it's only, sir, it's only on the map and it's only on the ordinance.
I'm getting to the point, if you'll let me have my 30 minutes. So I go down and get the ordinance of incorporation that has the so-called Stovall survey. I made a request for a copy of that.
You need to address the council, sir. You're not to address the...
Here it is. And Teresa was nice enough to get that to me.
Are you going to talk about the ordinance or the map? Because you're not.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I also asked for the meets and bounds, because it's a survey, Stovall survey, we have to have meets and bounds and field notes. So Teresa contacted Stovall survey, and here's his response. "We did not provide any meets and bounds, legal descriptions, field notes for the city. We are unable to provide any additional information regarding the map of the city. We do appreciate the opportunity and again apologize for the inconvenience." On city letterhead, unique. This is not a survey.
Okay, I'm going to explain that.
Now, here's our...
They sold their Stovall engineering, sold their business.
It doesn't matter. I forget who owns it. It was still Stovall.
You are still, okay, sir, you're still out of order?
I'm not out of order. Let me finish talking. Okay, so now we have, why do we need a survey under 42.002? We should have had that. Because when a town, when a group of citizens are getting together to incorporate, they're not required to do a survey. That's an expensive task. No one would be able to incorporate. All you're allowed or required to do is a map, which they did, okay? But they turned around and called it a survey because they didn't want to do that. So I took that ordinance...
You're to address the council, not the audience.
I took the ordinance that...
Sir, would you address the council?
Okay, I warned you three times. You're going to have to sit down now. You've exhausted your time. And you're out. Listen. No.
We've all the board.
Okay. You, listen, you are not, you are not...
Here's the map.
Okay, sir, this is not, this is not the ordinance. This is not with a zoning map.
Sir, there are 20 road map that are illegally defined.
Okay, sir, you are not...
Let's put down, please...
I warned him three times. I'm sorry. I warned you three times. You are, listen, you are not speaking on the topic at hand.
It's not true. Not true.
Check, check the dimension.
Should be, yeah.
Check all dimensions.
Come on. All right, thank you.
They don't want to hear the truth. They don't want you to hear the truth.
Next is Patty Buikema. Did I pronounce your name wrong? I apologize.
No, you did well. Thank you. Just a quick moment. I am so proud of how much work and effort y'all have been putting into this. Your inclusion of citizens outside of the council members is appreciated. The ability to make 100% of the population happy is impossible, and y'all have done a fantastic job of working towards the impossible. I appreciate it, and I hope that you do pass the ordinance in due time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you list her name?
Ms. Patty Buikema. Next to Doug Kendrick.
Mary Council, growing pains hurt. And, you know, there's a lot of aspirins in drugstores. You have to have some sort of zoning, because what I'm hearing is mixed feelings, but it's, I want to do what I can on my property, and that's understandable. But there's side two, you also want to take care of your neighbors as well. What I'm seeing is, and the lady offered it up too, there's a couple of things that you really need to start focusing on as well as you did as ordinance, that will also help this main zoning ordinance, to start breaking down some of the things that you really want to pay attention to, specifics. If you want a subdivision ordinance, the subdivisions will take care of it by the descriptions in that subdivision ordinance. If you're afraid builders coming in, I promise you, they don't care if they got to put two miles of concrete in a road, they're going to do it. And the other part of it is, is don't make things easy for y'all to be challenged by outsiders that do come into the, come into the town and challenge what you've already worked hard and trying to do. So these are some of the things that, discretion ahead a little bit when people are saying, and I truly understand, you know, their feelings of non-zoning, but at the same time, they want to promote a Board of Adjustments. Well, if you don't have zoning, there's nothing to defend in Board of Adjustments. So those are some things. Councilman, for all the mention about some of the safety and all that stuff, and that's my background as well, if you have subdivision ordinances, you put that safety in those. So that's what I'm saying. The breakdown of ordinances can give you more specifics instead of trying to write it down in one document. And that will certainly, certainly help you a whole lot. Again, y'all are making a lot of changes or proposing a lot of changes. You've got to have somebody to, somebody walk into town of poetry, they're going to say, I want to build this. Well, they got to have somebody to talk to that knows where things need to be in the zone, if there's a zoning to have. They need to, they need to have that ability to, well, I can't build it this way or that way, but that's all, needs to come. Again, it's hard work, you know? Y'all are going in the directions that have the community, and it's tough. But get down to some of the stuff where you can focus on some of the hardware issues by ordinance themselves, and that'll help and protect you, especially when outsiders come in, because they're going to challenge you. And they got their legal ways of doing that as well. Permits you have to have, but somebody's got to give them that permit. Really thank you for your time.
Thank you, darling. All right, next?
That was Duncan. Did I say that? Okay, next would be Tim Smith. I'm sorry. You probably knew you were coming up next. Is Brian Benson here?
No.
I think he left. He left.
Did he leave? Okay. Kevin, you put your name down here twice. I have, the next five, I'm sorry, let me just do it real quick. Kevin Potts, Glenn Strauss, Chad West, Josh Sinkovich, and Kenneth, I'm sorry, is it Eaton?
If your name's called, please come up to the deck.
Did you call Mr. Kevin Sinkovich?
Eaton.
We just scratched him out.
Oh, good.
So Glenn, was that Glenn Strauss? I think she called your name.
Yeah, Glenn, you're, um...
He called her here.
Yeah, you can sit there, that's fine. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce, it's Kenneth, it looks like E-A.
Eaton.
It's Eaton, okay, let's...
Eaton, okay, I'm sorry.
He's there.
He's there.
Okay, all right, all right, good.
Tim Smith, fortune post, self-storage, one of the few yellow dots at the... I need a clarification. I believe it's page eight, and it talks about skincare, storage, retail, all this and that and other. What's, how does that going to affect me and why is that even brought up for me?
We're going to write your questions down and we'll answer later.
Yes, sir, I'll answer that. I need an answer now because, I mean, you're potentially voting on something. I'd like a clarification on how, why that affects me specifically in my business.
To be fair, to be fair to everyone, we're going to take your question down and then we'll answer those all at once, Tim.
Because it just seems ironically every single one of those affects my business.
So you're talking about page eight?
I believe it was page eight.
Tim, can you clarify? I'm not finding it. I just want to make sure.
I just wanted it was page eight. You talked about skincare, storage.
Okay, it's page seven on...
Page seven. I couldn't all hear from the rain or the commotion, so...
And what is your question, so Ann can get that down?
I want to know how exactly that is affecting my business.
Okay, your business, okay.
You know, because here again, like I said, when I purchased my business, as other people purchased their business in this community, we looked at taking our businesses and to thrive with these businesses. And now I feel like I'm going to be getting handcuffed to be able to grow with my business. You know, I know I was grandfathered in and this, that, and the other, but at the same time, I didn't purchase that property and that business to keep it there. There's a property next door to me, which as far as I'm concerned, as the city council and city I look at, it needs to be taken care of and trying to purchase this property. Just last winter, there was a meth lab blowed up on it, you know? So if I have intentions, I've been wanting to purchase this property. Well, there's no good for me to purchase property now because I'm not going to be able to expand it because it's commercial. And then just because I'm grandfathered in, that's the only reason I'm going to keep building the buildings that I'm wanting to build, or this and the other. And from what I'm hearing from other people, they don't want businesses. But unfortunately, with some of the businesses talking to test, I'm paying way more in property taxes. I'm paying way more in water stuff as a business. Do I want a McDonald's, 7-11, or this and the other? No. But we do have entrepreneurs throughout this whole community. And to sit there and not have some of these single dwellings or some of these other places that are not entitled to do retail, if they want to sell farm eggs, if they want to sell hay, I make my living belling hay and selling hay. So you're going to sit there and tell me if they can't gather up some hay and sell it in their front yard because they're not retail? We can't have that. This is a small community for this reason.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Did you get all his questions?
It was basically one question.
All right.
I got it.
Okay.
We got it.
Yeah.
Good evening, Kevin Potts, 4949, County Road 321. We left Rockwall 18 years ago, in Royce City 11 years ago, to avoid the HOAs and the silly rules everybody in town likes to create. Now, there are people who want that, and they want the rules. But I would say the people here tonight, and mostly the people who live out here in rural America, are not the people who want HOAs or a list of rules to follow, and definitely not want to come before a council and request or ask permission to build a barn on their property, or have the council decide how big their porch is, or the road going to their shop or barn can be paved or has to be locked. I would agree that everyone here in this room, and all council members here tonight, would be in agreement that we wish to keep our town of poetry as rural as possible. We can all agree on that. But before we can come together as a town and do that, we need to be a community. We are not a community. We're a broken town. Broken and talked about in Carroll, Rockwall, and every other city within 30 minutes. Poetry is known to be a broken, divided town and chaos. We are not a community. We have not been a community since we incorporated several years ago. I would ask the council and the mayor tonight for one thing, to make the rebuilding of this commu, to make rebuilding this broken town into a community. If we push pause on this zoning thing and make our town and the healing of this town a priority, to make the friendships destroyed over the politics of this town a priority, to make coming together without politics a priority, to make the families that have been destroyed because of this town a priority. Then we can come together as a community, one voice, not divided, not sides, not separated, but together as a community. As leaders of the community, it is your responsibility to fix this broken town. It is your responsibility, whether you like it or not, to focus on unity of the town and... after the divide that happened after the incorporation. It is up to you to swallow your pride, put everything aside, and fix the problem here. I would challenge each of you council members, and you too, mayor, to push pause and focus on the unity of this town. To put the town first, come back and visit the language and keep developers out after healing has taken place. Then as a community, we can all make progress together. If you all push this zoning thing through with this kind of divide, you're gonna break this down. We will never, ever be a community. You will forever create sides in poetry for years and years to come. It's up to you to make poetry the priority, set your feelings and agendas aside, push pause on the zoning, and plan the first event that starts the healing process. Will you commit to that?
Your time is up. Thank you, Kevin. Chad West. Next is Blake Strauss.
She called my name, he already...
Okay, no, that's right, yeah. So this is Chad West.
Chad West, Poetry, 986. Just wanted to voice my opinion that I'm against the zoning, and really because of the inequality of the way the zoning is, is that we're punishing our current citizens for a falsity that we can keep out developers, and it's all false. The map itself has all this green space on it, all we can control is the 311 feet. So if my house that's inside that 311 feet, I have to ask for permission. But if your house is 311 feet outside of the town, you can do whatever you want. And that's where I struggle with it, from a standpoint of, I have to now ask for permission. I mean, the law who said it best, that we moved out here to not have to follow rules. If I wanna build a barn tomorrow morning, I wanna be able to go out, buy the lumber, and do it. But with passing zoning, we're saying we now have to ask for permission.
Glenn Strauss, 11072 County Road 2454. Decision I moved out here 18 years ago because we liked what poetry looked like, and it's proven to be what we expected it to be. We love, pardon me, we love poetry. We know we have to have zoning in, we have to, that are a concrete example. My parents bought a beautiful property at the end of a dead-end county road, bulldozed the road up around the hill, had a building site among mature pine trees, a forest of them, and we're gonna have a view two miles across mature pines. A year later, the people at the foot of the hill, less than 200 feet from their building site, built a chicken, what do you call it, baby where they raise chicks, and processed them. My folks had to sell the land, it smelled so bad they couldn't build. And that's the sort of thing zoning prohibits. And I too, thank you very much for the work you put in and the slings and arrows you have to endure, okay?
Thank you, Larry. Okay, next is Josh, or no, Josh is... Josh is next, yes. Josh Sinkovich.
Hello, my name is Josh Sinkovich, CR 2332. I agree with zoning to the extent. This town, three main principles of founding were to keep the town of Terrell from expanding, that's been rendered null and void mostly, to maintain our roads and refurbish them. We'll work on that, it's a continual process, it will be forever. Three, have some sort of zoning to keep poetry poetry. I believe that this ordinance goes, goes very well to that extent, but it's not perfect. I, I think 2.5 acres is a little excessive. There's a lot of people that are moving out and want the country lifestyle, but they don't necessarily can afford it. And I think 2.5 acres is on the high end, you know? Kaufman is one acre for Sepphic, 1.5 for Hunt, and 2.5 just sounds a little high for me, which we're trying to, you know, obviously keep developers out, but I think 2.5 is a little high, so if that could be revised down, that'd be great. I also wanted to point out the horse and the stables conversation. I don't know why horses specifically were pointed out and taken to the beating here, but I wanna say we're all, I think we need some sort of zoning to keep that world in the future from expansion. I think this goes a long ways towards it, but I think it should still be refined. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Next is Ken Eaton, I believe? Yes, yes. And while he's coming up, um, next is Jack Sinkovich, Shelley Smith, Patrick Smith. Is that Arlen Volk? Okay, thank you. And I think, is that one, two, three, four, and Herbert Fletcher?
Hello, my name's Kenneth Eaton, I'm in Livingston, my address was 1986 in July. This town made remarkable changes in the short time of law for a business, I've gone to lots of small towns, like Poetry Bay, Fiskville, a town of 3,000 people, had this battle, they lost perfectly, and I have 200,000 residents.
Can you speak into the mic?
Fiskville, I first went from Fiskville, working for a, Fiskville was a 15-year drive, 3,000 people, which probably 300,000 are now. Sunnyvale, today's Sunnyvale, you're finding out, they lost. So you can define what you all do, change is coming, need to slow it down. Whatever you put in here, it needs to slow that down, but you need to let the residents do what they wanna do with their property. You really do. And people are, and I'm contacting my appeals, you gotta have a thorough process to mitigate that. You can't just simply define, "I'm gonna punish you, ticket you." You need to conversation these people and see what they can do to address their problem and do it as neighbor, not as an enemy, not as a management company, as neighbors. You're taking us as a management opportunity, be a manager, we don't want managers, we want neighbors. Okay? And my current property, I don't know if I'm conforming or not, I really don't. I mean, I have a business, I have, and they're a business, an office building, 5,000 square feet of residential space, I built for my wife. She's, she's in a wheelchair, she cannot go down, I grab the road, the wheelchair gets stuck, she's gonna call 911, if I'm out there, I'm stuck. I built this building for her needs. I need to remodel my car house to be fully able to repair more. I would've spent a bunch of money, half a million to two quarters million dollars, I can just spend 25. I'm not gonna build it or do nothing if I'm not, I'm not conforming. I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna buy somewhere else, I sell my place, take my loss, and go somewhere else. You need not punish people who want, made investments in their property. And my current office building is worth more than my current car accessory building. But I'm opposite with you, I'm on, my two drivers, I'm on Poetry Road, I'm on 2454, I wanna put them together. You're eleven, based in ordinance. I'm gonna put myself a driveway on two different entry points. So I don't know, I'm, I'm in favor of what you wanna do, I want you to stay under them, I don't want D.R. Horton next door, there's 55 acres of sale next across me, I don't want D.R. Horton anywhere. And my neighbor, my neighbor, the west is probably featured off the barns. I promise you, I'm more than two people in violation, you probably got a lot more. You have no idea how many non-conforming properties you have. You should do a survey and find out who they are before you implement this, because there's a lot that's gonna be, they're gonna be marked for not to be here. You're not doing enough research on who's non-conforming. You're worried about the quality of property, you should be looking at the side yards. Do due diligence, then pass the same. But you gotta, whether you pass, it's not gonna win the battle long term, but just slow it down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ken. All right, Jack Sinkovich.
Jack Sinkovich, 10301 County Road 2326. The citizens of Poetry voted overwhelmingly to keep poetry poetry. We cannot allow people to move in and turn the place upside down. We have to have legally regulations. I think this is a reasonable zoning proposal and is a great way of fulfilling our commitment to our citizens.
Thank you, Jack. Shelley Smith?
Shelley Smith, okay, let's look at this from a very practical way of how it affects me, okay? 10 years, 23 years ago, my husband and I bought 10 acres on 1565. A few years later, we bought the 10 acres next door. We invested our retirement funds into buying that 10 acres. We're both self-employed, we're both entrepreneurs, we have no big corporation, anyway. The idea was that ultimately we could put a small house on the other 10 acres, the kids could live there for a while, we could have a caretaker live there for a while. Ultimately, when we need the money to pay for caretakers or stay out of a nursing home, we could sell that 10 acres. Unfortunately, the way the land is set up and the way our driveway is, that driveway plan completely wipes out any of that plan, because our main driveway is in the middle of the house. If we had another house over here, we could not sell it with a, with a shared driveway without really jumping through hoops at a bank. A bank's not gonna give you money for land that has no access. So there's that. The, um, let's look at the land next door to me, 35 acres that sits on the corner of 1565 and 986. Now, the way this land is set up, there's multiple areas where a driveway can come in, there could be an in and an out, so that a developer then gets past the 311, or maybe puts a house or something in the 311, and then they can do as they please with the rest. Now, best case scenario, they put in some cute little ranchettes on two and a half acres. Worst case, a trailer park, and, or an apartment building, because this zoning does not stop that. This zoning only hurts the people with the small acreage. I shouldn't say that, it does hurt the people with the big acreage, but it really hurts the people with the, the smaller acreage. I implore you to open up the planning and zoning to more public conversation. Have actual meetings, get together, so let's all talk, not just the people who are invited to talk. And we have some incredible minds here in Poetry, and I think if we get together, we can come up with a great solution. I also dearly love driving down the road and seeing all these beautiful wide-open pastures with the cows and stuff, but I don't get to control what they do with that. The only way I can control that is if I buy that land when it comes up for sale. Thank you.
Who's next? Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, formerly of Poetry Texas. And thanks to the legislature of the great Republic of Texas, I am now a free citizen of Kaufman County.
All right, order.
What you're considering tonight, which is this comprehensive zoning ordinance and comprehensive map, in my opinion, is the most significant activity that this council or any member of it will undertake. What you're gonna do is put in, in place a widespread, serious impact on what people can and cannot do with their own property. And I'm somewhat disappointed by the eagerness of the council to cut off people who offer opinions that they don't agree with. People are scared because of what's happened for the last three years. They want some reason to trust their local government, yet over and over again, local government does things off the record, in secrecy, and frankly, in violation of state law. So to maybe let's gain back some of that trust. And Councilmember Blake, you seem puzzled by that, so let me try to offer you some information you might not know.
You need to stay on the topic.
I am, ma'am, I'm talking about zoning under Texas law. Under Texas law, when a town such as Poetry acts as the zoning commission, which is what was decided before you got ringed into the rodeo, under 211.0075, if that council which is acting as the commission appoints a planning and zoning committee, the planning and zoning committee is subject to the Open Meetings Act, just like the town council.
Okay, we're not talking about the process, you're supposed to stick to the map.
Councilmember Blake, would you like to know if you followed the law on this zoning process? Yeah?
So, so, sir...
Ma'am, I'm gonna let...
We are not, listen, I've given you two warnings now. The next time that you talk about the process over the map or the zoning, that's what you're supposed to be talking on, either the map or the ordinance, not the process. I already said that from the beginning.
Ma'am, listen to me.
Sir?
What the town needs to evaluate is, have we done the zoning correctly in accordance with state law?
You're going back to, to, two and a half years ago.
Ma'am, you're trying to cover up a violation of state law. Why would you do that? You're the chief of presiding officer.
Accusations, all right, sit down, please. No, his time's up.
Flying Paint Ranch at AOL.com if you want a copy of it.
All right, who's next? Oh, I'm so sorry, Arlen Volk.
I'm relaxed, my time.
Okay.
I need to be interrupted.
Okay. So did I miss you? Yeah, did I, Herbert Fletcher? Did I miss you? So Herbert Fletcher is next. Okay. Oh, he did? Okay. I think Charles Bastum, I think he left as well, is that, is that where, yeah. Okay, who's, is that it? That's it. Okay, so...
Mr. Mike Griffin?
I'm sorry, Mike Griffin?
Mike Griffin.
Yeah, I just have two pages, do you have a page there? Oh, you know what, there's a third page. Okay, there's four more. Mike Griffin, Bill Skinner, Charles McBride, and Buddy Pierce, come on up. Okay, so Mike Griffin, you're next, please, thank you.
Mike Griffin, 6247 Dry Creek Run. Having been a member of the committee that was formed to look into the possibility of zoning, I was given the opportunity to learn much more about zoning than I ever wanted to know. It is my limited understanding based on what I have learned in the last three years, that because of the physical layout, unique layout of our town, that a zoning ordinance is going to be a limited tool for us to use against the development. I believe that the objectives of a comprehensive plan could be better met by focusing on setbacks only, and look at that as a, as a tool to effectively get where we want to go. There are sometimes in life that the cure is worse than the disease. And what I would implore this council to do, simplify the cure. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Bill Skimmer, Skinner, Bill Skinner, did he leave? Okay. Charles McBride? Buddy Pierce? Okay. All right, so we had 30 signed up, is there anything else?
I have the finish.
Okay, the time is now 10:29, we're gonna take a five-minute break. And we're gonna look at the questions that were presented and try and answer them. All right. Okay, we're gonna resume our, our meeting. Okay, we're gonna probably have it tomorrow night. Probably gonna continue tomorrow.
I have your shirt here, see?
He's got a good reason.
We're leaving in the morning.
I haven't been a wife for a child, that's a good start.
I'm going to go on that one.
He has a, she's...
I leave to go out of town in the morning, by the way.
I wouldn't blame you.
We go twice a year. We canceled last weekend because it was raining and got to move to this weekend, got our dinner reservations at Lawyer's. Oh, it's good down there.
I'm doing all I can do. You just sit over and turn it up. I'm doing all I can.
I need to see other things besides, if somebody came here, they're going to ask me to speak out.
Okay, so we're going to resume our meeting. I am going to officially close the public hearing portion. So all comments of the public portion of the public hearing for zoning on the map and the ordinance are closed at this time. We are going to go ahead and try and with our legal counsel, answer some of the questions that are here. So we had, I guess our first question is, Jack Mullins had, will his access drives be grandfathered in? Can you answer that, Attorney Berman?
Which question were you talking about?
This is Mr. Mullins. He was the second speaker. He was asking if he has a growing use in his driveway, would it be grandfathered in?
Whatever uses are existing on all properties in town as of the date of adoption of this ordinance will be grandfathered, they will be lawful nonconforming uses, and they will be allowed to continue indefinitely. Tim Smith mentioned, I have a storage business, how will this ordinance affect me? The answer is really simple, it will affect him at all. The permissible uses that are identified in the B business district are uses that are currently on his property. Those uses are not limited by this ordinance. He can continue to use them or to put his property to those uses as he sees fit. He can increase or expand them or decrease them as he wants to. The only difference that this ordinance will have is that if he wants to create or put his property to a new use that is not a listed one, he's just going to have to ask you guys for permission. In terms of nonconforming uses, vested rights and lawful nonconforming uses can continue indefinitely. The transfer of a piece of property that has a nonconforming use law or structure on it does not terminate its nonconforming status. A nonconforming use or a nonconforming structure will continue indefinitely, notwithstanding changes of ownership, until the use or structure has been abandoned or the owner converts it to a lawful conforming use or structure. So they will last forever. Does it matter if you sell the property or if you pass away and your estate inherits? Doesn't make a difference, the nonconformity continues to exist. Couple of questions that I wanted to answer really quickly if I could. Those questions about the Board of Adjustment. We don't have detailed provisions in our ordinance regarding the Board of Adjustment because the ordinance's goal is simply to create and establish the council as the BOA. Texas law section 211.008 and 211.009 of the Texas Local Government Code contains fairly comprehensive provisions that outline the jurisdiction of the board, of all boards of adjustment, that outline processes and procedures, and the dictated method of appeal. And it's a pretty simple, straightforward method of appeal, although the appellate timetable is really short. Our ordinances don't need to detail all of those requirements because they're already stated in state law. There's no need for us to have to reprint them, so we're defaulting to state law, which we would have to do no matter what. There are some specific questions relating specific articles and there was a provision in 1.3 that addresses the town in the ETJ. I said this early when I spoke and I want to make sure that everybody completely understands this. Our zoning regulations, unlike subdivision regulations, our zoning regulations do not apply in our ETJ. And there's a provision that, one provision that might, specifically the sign regulation, but nothing else will. And that's why that section says something like, "subject to exclusions and state law." These zoning regulations will not apply to any territory within the town's ETJ except the sign regulations. Someone made a comment, single-family residential, there's nothing in it that says that we have cottage businesses. No, there is. You're allowed to have home occupations and it's in the definitions. You can put your property to a cottage business as a home occupation if you use it in accordance with the definition, which doesn't really impose any limitations at all because this really is a minimal zoning ordinance. And then the last thing I wanted to address is, most of the speakers and most of the people here that are objecting to this whole process are, I get the fact that you don't want to be bound by rules, you know? I mean, I understand that nobody wants to live under regulations by arbitrarily enforced homeowners association restrictions. I live in a subdivision with the mandatory HOA and I can't stand those people, you know? But, you know, sometimes I test the waters every chance I get just to make the point. But, you know, y'all understand that there's a trade-off here. You know, what you want to do with your property, that's correct, I respect that. I have every ounce of respect I can give you for that. But at the same time, y'all understand that the lack of rules that you want to live by will also apply to your next-door neighbor. So when your next-door neighbor sells their property to, you guys keep saying D.R. Horton as an example, but D.R. Horton, compared to subdivisions I've seen in other cities, that's a pretty nice one. That's a pretty nice one. There are developers out there and builders that build subdivisions that are more dense than that and a holy cow, you'd be happy to get a D.R. Horton if you had one of those. Your next-door neighbor could sell out to a D.R. Horton or could sell out to, I don't know, a concrete batch mixing facility or slaughterhouse. These rules that would apply to you will also apply to your neighbors. If you want to preserve the rural character of the town of Poetry, the only tool you have to do that, other than market conditions, the only tool that you have to have any control over that are your zoning regulations. And these are really, really loose. They don't say very much at all. Now, you don't have to, you can talk with the council and you can tell them, please don't adopt these at all, and if you don't, you understand the concept of vested rights, right? When someone comes into town and applies for some type of a permit or gives the town or the county fair notice of a project, a commercial development smack within the middle of the town of Poetry, once we have knowledge of that, fair notice, any regulations that we adopt afterwards will not apply to that development. So if we don't adopt this tonight and a concrete batch mixing facility submits a permanent application in Kaufman County, these regulations won't apply to that and they can continue to develop their property all day long.
Only if it is in the ETJ, you can still develop it.
If Kaufman, yes, that's right. All they have to do is set up in the ETJ. But we can't impose these regulations in our ETJ and people are getting out of our ETJ. All we can do is impose...
Order, order, order.
All we can do is...
We have three women talking at once.
All we can do is adopt these and impose them within our limits. We don't have the authority to go beyond our town limits, but this is the best we can do. So you don't have to adopt zoning regulations if you don't want to and you can, nobody will be bound by any rules that deal with the use of their properties at all, or you can and make the trade-off to try to do whatever you can to protect the rural lifestyle on a permanent basis. And to say that, you know, wait until development comes, that's going to be waiting until it's too late.
Does he get over into town politics?
It's not politics. I'm not saying you should, I'm not saying that you should adopt these or not. All I'm saying is that those are the factors that need to be considered.
Okay, so listen, this is not, the public hearing is over, so he is trying to explain to answer the questions from the citizens who already spoke. He's going over all, in fact, I'm making sure that he answered all these questions. So he talked about, we can't have cottage industry or cottage businesses, that's really fine. There's some people I don't think heard some of the things and that could have been a storm, but cottage industries are fine, I think. Simeon went over that quite well. It won't affect, Mr. Smith, I think was worried, Tim Smith was worried about his business growing. He can buy the property next to him, that's fine. Can you think of a reason we couldn't?
Can Tim, does Tim have to come up here and get it zoned business? That's his concern. Yes, he can buy it, but let's not pass over the question. It's zoned SFE right now. He would have to apply to change it to business, correct?
He would continue to be, he could continue to use it for what's being used.
Where he's at.
So I think it's a mobile home right now.
But to expand it to a different piece of property, zone differently, he'd have to ask for a zoning change.
And that's what he says.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a mobile home right now and I didn't know he was going to try to buy it, but I don't know if, I guess the...
He might, then he might need a zoning change, yes.
Okay.
If y'all adopt this.
And that's good. I mean, we don't want the tachinag going, a thousand properties over, you know, the sand pit could easily expand on a ton of different properties or any other business could keep going and going and going otherwise.
Well, y'all understand that the only city in the state of Texas, other than really, really small towns, that does not have a comprehensive zoning ordinance is the city of Houston. Y'all know, everybody else has one of these or something, something a lot more comprehensive than this. Well, enforceability is a different question, but the first question is, if you don't have a license, it's a different...
But we are under state law because of, we don't have a charter, so we are under state law for a lot of this. We're not like a large city so that has their own...
Well, point of order, this is not in the discussion and we're not supposed to respond to citizens like that.
I wasn't responding to that, I was just making a point that, I was making a point that we are under state, I'm answering this, I'm reading this as we're going. One of them was, one of the questions here was, why aren't we doing a certain thing? And it's because we are under state code, we don't have our own charter and so we have to follow state, it's all defaults to state law for general law of town. I think Attorney Berman, I think he answered all of the questions.
Laura, can I jump in?
Okay, all right. Okay, we have additional questions.
Well, on Jack Mullins, what I wrote down was, he said he has a piece of land that he prior, back in 74, planted with Kaufman County in one and a half acre lots and they approved it. And he just wanted to know if that would be honored under the zoning that we're talking about. Could he still develop those as one and a half acre lots even though they might be nonconforming?
Those are nonconforming lots and they can still be used under our ordinances. Yes. He's already done it. And if they've taken any steps towards it, then they're fine.
Yeah, I don't know, he just, it sounds like it's been planted since 74, but he hasn't done anything with it. He still has a standing approval.
It's already planted, the lots are the lots. They may be nonconforming, but he's allowed to use them.
Okay, Mr. Eaton mentioned that something about he was wanting to build on to his current house. I think that his current house is probably, I went and visited his, or just drove by, I think, just looking at it, it would be well past the 75 feet setback. It's fine, he does have a commercial building in the back, he was talking about, that's where his wife does her business, her office, but he wants to add on to that. Is that a problem?
I don't see that his house is nonconforming.
It's not nonconforming.
So why wouldn't he be able to add on to it?
Why wouldn't he be?
Exactly.
Well, I just want to get confirmation that what we're thinking is correct. Okay. And then we had Ms. Smith concerned about her 10 acres and our 10 acres and something about, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure I completely understand what the concerns were, but, you know, to a large extent, yeah, the only way that you can truly control what happens on your neighbor's property is by actually buying it.
So I'll, well, I'll help you out with that. We changed it. It was very confusing, the way it was written originally, where it said, "one driveway per residence." Now it's dwelling unit, so if you have two houses, you can put two driveways. If you build a third and fourth house, you can build a third and fourth driveway. So in your case, you're completely fine.
Okay, well, wait a minute, that means then the dwelling unit, it only applies if I'm the one living in it, if it's a house...
No, it's a dwelling unit. We shouldn't really be having a conversation like this, but...
You just call her on it.
I know, and now I'm, I'll stop, stop.
It's so hard.
I know, I just...
So we're trying to answer that question, but I think the question was unclear, so we needed a little clarity to that. So thank you, Attorney Berman. I think we did solve that problem and I think there's a lot of miscommunication out there, but so as far as the, I think we cleared that up when we went over it with the council. Okay, was there any other questions, counsel? Was there any other questions that you...
You were going to answer my question. The way that the current P and Z committee operates...
Okay, sir, but you're out of order. You are so out of order, just give it a rest, please.
Yes, yes, see, I don't want to address the question because he's talking about a committee that we, that the town used to have, that does not anymore. This town has never...
No, so, sir...
This town has never appointed a planning and zoning commission. This ordinance would do that.
So the council decided to have two council members fine-tune the ordinance that we all looked at for months. So, you know, because it's hard to do that in a group setting in front of people and they fine-tuned it, we're bringing it here, do it, you know, just as we're supposed to. And so, but again, we're here to talk about the ordinance and the map.
And that is not a commission. That is not a commission.
Okay, you're out of order. Stop.
So to clarify, there was...
You think you're an armed chair legal analyst, I guess. We have a paid attorney, he's giving his counsel, stop. So you've been given two warnings and next time, you're out of here, okay? All right, we have...
Do you want me to address that concern?
I would, you know what? You've been warned. Please just escort him out. They're... That is disrespectful, the way that they're behaving. All right. Okay, so we're going to move on, so the council, now I will explain, Councilmember Anderson has an excuse because his wife is undergoing treatment and so he has a medical excuse, so he did have to leave. We are four of us left, that is perfectly valid to have four of us here. So, and if any other amendments the council wants to make at this time. I think some of this was just needed communication. There were some misunderstandings that were just inaccurate. And so are there any other...
That was most of it and I apologize if I didn't explain it well enough upfront.
So are we not going to discuss the district regulations any longer? The setbacks? We're just going to skip over that?
She's asking. I've already, I've already said, I'm going to tell you, if nobody's going to speak up, I'm going to say we resort back to the last copy, it was 314. So I'm asking if anybody's going to step up and discuss it.
The setbacks on business?
The whole district, no, the whole district regulations, all of them. I think council has made a pretty good path moving forward. That included you, Simeon White, that included you, Jonathan Blake, that included you, Mr. Jaffe. Now we're taking a huge leap backwards, guys.
Yes, I think that it shouldn't be as restrictive. I think people should be given more freedom and I don't think they should be restricted to having it back 110 feet and I don't believe that we should add that many nonconforming uses. I think we owe it to people to try and make sure we don't infringe on liberties as much as possible. I mean, I want this to be as minimal as I can get.
So Terry, for my benefit, could you clarify? So you are not agreeing with the numbers that are in the 315 2024 printing?
No.
Under District Regulations Appendix 1, is that correct?
That's correct. 227 is the last...
So you want us to roll back? So what were the figures? What are the differences? Because I don't have that copy.
Okay. Minimum lot width, maximum height, they stayed the same from 315... Minimum lot width, maximum height, they stayed the same from 3 to 2 to, or 227 to current.
So, those are good.
Side yards, they were 35-feet across the board.
So, you wanting to be more restrictive?
Yes, yes.
Why, you wanna be more restrictive?
Golly, how many, how many times we gonna go down this road? We have a pattern where council has already walked through this.
But, we have both on this.
And you said, you said earlier, we've already had a chance to talk about this. Why are you bringing it up now? Why are you bringing it up now?
Well, you're just being more restrictive. These two fellows were charged with making, fine-tuning it and they listened to the citizens and didn't wanna be as restrictive.
And I've listened to them too. They said they don't want zero lot lines.
Okay, so, five...
It's a valid, it's a valid point. It's liberty versus keeping away big development and I, we both, and that's the side I'm on. I'm gonna lean towards that and I understand the other side as well, but I just don't hold it.
So, so, we, they amended it and originally, they were gonna do away with any side or back setbacks, but then they, then we listened to our legal counsel and we listened to citizens and then we listened to legal counsel and he said, "You know, you probably don't wanna just have zero. You wanna have at least five, so you're not infringing on the fence rows."
I don't wanna make anybody's building nonconform... Just talk to Mr. Eaton, told you, y'all don't have a clue how many nonconforming houses there are out here. Y'all just keep saying many and a few. Y'all don't have a clue. So, you're saying 35 is gonna make fewer? No, I'm not saying it is, but I know it's protect us for the future.
It's gonna be a lot more. There are, I was looking through the neighborhoods, driving through...
And council has agreed to do that over this process of seven months.
Okay, wait a minute. We never, we...
We made these up, it's time.
You, you...
No, 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 no. We, we, these are in the town forum.
Okay.
I wouldn't handcuff ourselves to past mistakes. I mean, we're learning.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna change it back and then we'll vote on it.
Okay, you're wanting to make it more restrictive instead of less restrictive and I think that we're trying to make it less restrictive.
You're correct.
Well, you finish up very well with the numbers, so...
No, I'm not gonna go into, if you wanna look at 227, that's my proposal for the district regulations.
Okay, I guess I just don't have that copy, so I don't...
And Simeon, when I, when I emailed you on 229, you said, "Yeah, get this document out." Did you not know the district regulations were changing mere two weeks later? You had no heads-up of that.
About what?
That the district regulations were gonna change. You posted this on 227. I emailed you on 229. Now, print this and give it to citizens without access. Sure, give it to as many as you can and then two weeks later, it changes. You don't have no idea it's gonna change?
No, I didn't. We hadn't discussed it. I'm sorry, we just had the meeting after that.
We had a meeting on March 1st.
I mean, we hadn't talked about it.
We had a meeting on March 1st. I don't understand...
I wouldn't mislead you, Mr. Terry. I was trying to...
Let me just fill this out.
Well, I'm really sorry. We just didn't have the meeting. We hadn't discussed it. The point was...
So, you had a meeting? What was the meeting?
The meeting was between me and Mr. Blake and he had some concerns.
Anybody else?
I think it's very legitimate. We did invite some citizens on account. Oh, yes. Now, I said that upfront and I wish more people invited. I'd rather more than showed up. I would've invited you too, but we can't bury you, Colm. Hey, I'm offering as many people as I can.
So, we were listening to citizens and we had a citizen who had the idea about the driveway and it was intriguing, so we wanted to learn more about that. He did speak in the other meeting and we invited him to explain more. And we said that in the meeting, "We're gonna invite you to come explain more of what you're proposing." So, you two could, if you had come up with that idea and we were intrigued by it, then we could've invited you too. But, so, so, but we're back to the district regulations. We were trying to free this up and make it less restrictive. So, 35-foot is more restrictive and that would make more of the homes nonconforming and that's not our goal, to hurt our, our current people is not our goal.
Well, Mr. Fowler asked for a vote. We could just move forward with that.
Alright, let's move forward with, on this particular district regulation or all of it?
I mean, I guess we can move forward with all of it unless there's any problems.
I'd make a motion, Tara. My motion is that we table this. My, one of my concerns is I haven't seen the same document two days in a row. It keeps changing and I get that. We're trying to refine it, but I'm just sitting here amongst the noise and other things trying to think about, okay, what are the issues? What are the concerns? And I personally can't do that, sitting right here, right now, in good conscience and say, "I wanna vote for this and I hope we remember all the little markups and writing." So, I make a motion, we table it.
Okay, so, I'm proposing that we have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30.
The motion's on the table.
Well, we have a lot of motion. We need a second.
Okay, but we have to know how, when we're gonna have the next meeting, 'cause technically, table is not a term that we're supposed to be using technically. So, you, if you're gonna postpone it to tomorrow night at 6:30?
If we do that tomorrow, you know now that it's punitive towards me because I've already told you I was going out of town. So, let's not make this punitive if we're gonna postpone it.
Well, how long?
Agree, Mr. Berman? No, it's, it's not a bonus, so let's deal with this tonight.
We've heard everybody, there's been no major edits, so...
Okay, so, alright, we have a motion, okay, the motion on the floor is to table it.
So, next council meeting.
Okay, we haven't, okay...
Clarify your motion, Mike.
Well, my, my, you know, I agree with the comment that was made earlier, that this is the single most impacting thing that this council has done to date and may ever do and I just don't wanna do it in a hurry. And I know we spent a year and a half or two years or whatever getting to this point, but I just, I don't wanna feel pressured to make an up or down vote on this tonight 'cause I'm not even sure what I'm up and down voting. I've got writing all over and I think others do, so I just need more time to plan it and I don't know that tomorrow night is gonna, gonna do that. I don't know.
I think we're kicking the can down the road. We've been at this, I, we've been at this for two and a half years. I think that we made very few edits. So, alright, the table, the motion on the, on the table is to table it. All those in favor of tabling it? He already did, seconded by Fowler. Okay, so, we have two votes to table it. Alright, and then we have two... I'm sorry?
I, I'm just responding, I'm not gonna be guilty by omission. The developments can come in as they've been coming in. We spent a long time on this. If we just delay and delay eternally like we have been, I'm gonna be letting down more of my neighbors. I regret that we didn't...
Yep, and do you know that there, okay, so, alright, so, the votes are, there's two and two. I'm the tiebreaker, I vote that we don't table it. And so, it's three and two. And so, the next motion will be...
I motion to approve as we've edited tonight.
Second.
Alright, that is seconded. All those, all those in favor? And I'm the tiebreaker and that passes through.
She knew what she was doing.
The rest of the meeting, since it's so late, we're going to postpone all the items to the next meeting.
I trust citizens out there will agree.
Since we don't wanna, he, he, to Terry.
Thank you, Attorney. I mean, because you have high power, knowledge of it.